All right, everyone. The August 5th, 2015 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as being presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 or closed caption for hearing-impaired viewers through underwriting by Cox Communication.
Are you okay with that?
Please note, customers of CenturyLink may view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002, and some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.lasvegasnevada.gov. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2, the web, and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits of the back of these chambers out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with our stairs, please check with the city marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First, and employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment-related items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online in the clerk's office at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking on to public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone is present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please see our city staff up front. If you parked in the parking garage across this street, please be sure you have your ticket validated by our security officers when you're exiting these chambers. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given so ably this morning by Reverend Bonnie Polly, Christ Episcopal Church, and please remain standing for our pledge. Thank you.
Good morning. Let us pray. O God, the fountain of wisdom whose will is good and gracious and whole truth is truth. We beseech you to guide and bless each member of our City Council assembled here today. Give each of them the spirit of wisdom and understanding that they may discern the truth in all that they undertake. Show them your purpose in what they are doing this day as they exercise their duties as leaders in our city. Teach us all to seek you and fill our hearts with thankfulness as we strive to serve each other. We ask this in your most holy name. Amen.
(Inaudible)
This is our ceremonial portion of the agenda, but before we get to those items, I want to take a moment to invite Joyce, if you'll come up here, please. It's a time to remember a very valued member, an employee of ours. Our print media supervisor, Rich Marston, passed away about 10 days ago, which was a devastating loss for everybody at City Hall, for his family, friends, and those of us who've worked with him at City Hall. Rich had been with the city for 15 years and proved to be a most devoted, respected, very professional member of our city staff. And every morning, as I would arrive here at City Hall, Rich would always have a smile and say "good morning" to me before I got in the elevator, frequently stopping to tell me what was going on in his department, or something about one of his staff or family members, and specifically Joyce. He was larger-than-life and a personality who truly cared about his employees and always put family first. Rich was someone we all strive to emulate, and so I want to tell you, Joyce, on behalf of everybody that works here in your City Council, too, we loved your husband and we're just so sorry at the loss. So just know we all are praying with you and extend condolences and sympathies to you. Thank you. He did love you. Thank you.[386.31][386.31](Applause) I know he's watching us, and he's certainly watching everybody in the print shop and mailroom, so don't think you're getting away with anything. So, Councilman Beers, you had the bully pulpit moments ago, so it's back to you. What are you going to be doing now but Donny Osmond?
It is Citizen of the Month time, actually, and so the duty falls on Ward 2. Many, many years ago, Las Vegas had kind of a famous transplant. Many Las Vegans are transplanted. This one was particularly famous because he was named Howard Hughes. And I'm not going to get the story completely right, but he assembled a vast acreage way out at the west edge of our valley that had big plans to become a military aircraft testing and proving ground. Eventually, that happened down in Southern California, and this land ended up passing to his heirs. Back in 1982, I was employed as a young radio newsman in Las Vegas and did a 20-part mini-series on the future of Las Vegas that ended up winning some regional recognition, but one of those pieces was an interview with Fred Lewis. Maybe you remember Fred. He was the TV anchor, I think at Channel 8, right? Forever, at least my definition of forever. And retired from Channel 8, became the spokesman for the Howard Hughes Company and what they were going to do out there, and the land was going to be named HUSITE, H-U-S-I-T-E. And it was an interesting, interesting piece. Here we are now, more than 30 years later, and we all know Summerlin as the HUSITE area. Summerlin was a vast master-plan community. Many of you may remember Richard Bonar, who was the planning commissioner that I appointed to the planning commission. He was one of the original designers of what we know today as Summerlin. And so it's very impactful on Southern Nevada. Residents, when they choose to move out to Summerlin, in addition to paying their property taxes, also end up paying HOA dues to fund a parallel organization, which is the Homeowners Association. They're the producers of, for example, the fabulous Fourth of July Parade that we see in Summerlin every year. Which brings us to Pam Scott. Will you come up here and join me, Pam? Pam has been a mainstay in the homeowners' association world out there. She has been largely responsible for all the things that most of us think are good out in Summerlin, and part of that is a close working relationship with the city and the homeowners' association out there. Pam joined the Sun City Community Association in September 1995. Let me do that math. No, I'm not going to. Over the next 20 years, she served as an important contributor to the entire development team, instrumental in the successful formation and operation of a master community association organization which serves all, past, present, and will serve future residents of Summerlin. I actually met Pam when I was serving in the legislature, although I was already a resident of Summerlin at that time. She also does the, I think fair to say, unpleasant duty of going to Carson City and diving into the occasionally revered but mostly reviled Nevada revised statute 116, which is the state law that governs homeowners' associations and how community associations are put together and how they work. So in the past three and a half years, Pam and the Ward 2 office have worked to address squatters, roadway issues, community enhancements, put up signage at the pavilion pool and Veterans' Memorial Leisure Services Center to help people find their way through that pretty massive complex. And she's brought information about resources from a number of sources to help us deal with the downturn in the economy as well. Pam is here as Citizen of the Month because she has decided to retire. It's not going to be the same world. Big impact on Ward 4 as well, as Councilman Anthony knows, he's got a big chunk of Summerlin in his work. She is going to spend time with her family and relax and...[683.12][683.12](Laughter) She's got a few hobbies besides going to Carson City. She's indicated that she does intend to remain active in monitoring and contributing to future legislation involving community association law as a, oh boy, engaged, expert, private citizen.[700.81][700.81](Laughter) Would you like to give us a few words?
Well, thank you very much. Little did I know, when I moved to Las Vegas in 1990, that 25 years later, I would still be here, and I joked with my friends from the Midwest, I didn't know whether to bring my business suits or buy some feathers, because I really hadn't been to Las Vegas. And I got here and I discovered that Las Vegas is like any other city. You leave the Strip, you leave the Fremont Street, and it's just neighborhoods, and it's just people in those neighborhoods. And whether it's a big master plan like Summerlin, or a small cul-de-sac neighborhood, or an urban development neighborhood, we all want exactly the same thing. We want good infrastructure, we want things well-maintained, we want our children to feel part of the community, we want to be able to express what we need to express with our government. So I will say that we've had a very good working relationship. Councilman Beers is correct. I did interact with him a lot when he was in the Assembly, and we weren't always on the same side of the issues, but we rose above it. And we've had a great working relationship with his office and his staff, certainly with Vicky Skilbred and John Behr, and they've been great immediate response when we have issues, because as Councilman said, we have the same issues in Summerlin as any place. There's homeless, there's vagrants, there's squatters. We also have great neighborhoods and a lot of interaction, as every other neighborhood does, but we all have the same problems, no matter where we live, and it's great to know you can go to your city councilman, because that's where you should go, and you do get good help with that. That's been our experience. Thank you.
In case nobody believes you, we have...
My brother won't.
Your brother won't? We have a City of Las Vegas Citizen of the Month plaque for you. And for the next month, over here is a sign that will be mounted on the light pole right outside City Hall. As you walk from the garage into the building, everyone will be able to note that you are this month's Citizen of the Month. Thank you very, very much for everything you've done to make my staff and I look good, frankly.[843.87][843.87](Applause) Let's all step over and have a picture.
Are you going to sit?
Oh, and Tom Warden is here as well. In fact, a whole group, Sharrius, from the homeowners' association and from Howard Hughes Company. Thank you all for coming down. Mayor, here's the mic.
So you know me, I just have to keep talking through everything anyway. We're so proud of you and everything you've done. But in 1984, we had plans to start a nonprofit, nonreligious school. And I used to play tennis when I had free time in the old days, and one of my tennis partners was a woman by the name of Lummis. And Fran Lummis happened to be married to Will Lummis, who happened to be part of the Howard Hughes family and had the responsibility for building out the 25,000-acre HUSITE area, which was, there was nothing there. There was beinos, West Lake Mead, and no development whatsoever. And I got a moment to sit down with Mr. Lummis and said, "People follow good schools. I'm going to build this school." And because at that time, John Goolsbee was the operative head and president of Howard Hughes and the development of what became Summerlin from HUSITE, we got the first parcel of land, 40 acres, to build a school. So before you got here, and you were probably a little thought in your mother's eye, there's history to this community. But anyway, we thank you for everything that you've done. You know your city is just very proud of you. Thank you. And Tom, you work for a good group, do you not? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, they pictured all the while I was mouthing, so, you know.[963.81][963.81](Laughter) Thank you. Yep, there's history behind everything, and when I tell you, dirt road, West Lake Mead was dirt road going out to anything beyond 95. I mean, it was really incredible. There was no Sun City, Summerlin, the Del Webb production, there were no schools out there, it was nothing, 25,000 acres of nothing. So we have some pictures too, but now I can't see, so hold on one second for our next item. I would like to invite our community services deputy director, Dr. Lisa Morris Hibbler, wherever you are. I never know where she is or what she's dressed like. Where are you? She always looks different every time. Yay for Dr. Lisa Morris Hibbler![1018.23][1018.23](Applause) She does have her own fan club everywhere. Lisa's overseeing our educational outreach through programs like Downtown Achieves, My Brother's Keeper, and Safety. You look lovely, as always. In addition, we also have Yoli Flores, senior fellow with campaigning for grade-level reading, who I'd also like to have her join us.[1042.58][1042.58](Applause) How are you? So nice to have you with us. Congratulations. We know that attendance is essential to student achievement and graduation, and we're committed to dedicating all of our, well, not all, but much of our resources and attention to reducing chronic absenteeism rates with a focus starting as early as pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. Attendance gaps among groups of students often turn into achievement gaps, and that surely undermines student scores. The PACE-setter Program recognizes schools that have made great improvements in attendance, and that includes the work that has been done at J.T. McWilliams Elementary School. So I'd like to invite J.T. McWilliams principal Randy Chung to join us at the podium. Where are you?[1097.24][1097.24](Applause) You know, as a school principal, you're supposed to always sit up front. You want your students to sit in the front, the very last row and the furthest section from the podium. And you've been here before, and you know it's so good to see you. And Dr. Barton, where are you? Aha, from the Clark County School District. Now, this is a gentleman, Wes Prep. For those of you who know, a really great school here that started as one of the lesser achieving schools, Dr. Barton brought that school right up. Where'd you go? Oh, slow. Say hi to Dr. Barton. He's now with, obviously, with a high, high post in the Clark County School District, but so involved and continues to be so involved with us. And this wonderful principal, who's sat in the back, and his staff have done, obviously, a phenomenal job working with parents, and that's the key, working with parents to get the students to increase attendance. Principal Chung, we'd like to hear from you about the great work that you've been doing at your school. Before, I'm going to turn this microphone over to Yoli Flores to present your award, and I think I'm going to change this. I'm going to hear from you next. I'm going right here first. No, I'm going right to you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We're really excited today to have with us Yoli, who's part of a national campaign for grade-level reading. They do a lot of work around summer learning programs and also improving chronic absenteeism rates. And that's really important, because in the schools that we work in, kids not coming to school is a problem. And it doesn't matter what we do to improve academic outcomes if children are not coming to school. So this actual presentation today is also kicking off our campaign for Attendance Matters, and usually that happens in September, but because schools start on August 24th, we're going to be kicking that off today, and it'll run all the way through September. So we're really excited about that work. And also, we have with us, and I'll wait till Yoli presents the award, but we have other members in the audience of the district who are also going to be joining this campaign for the next year. So we're excited about that as well.
Let's go to Dr. Chung first. Let's go this way first. Say something about your fabulous school and the work you've been doing, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would love to sit here and say to you all, hey, I did this all by myself. You know nothing happens, schools, organizations, City Council, everything is team effort. I would love to take credit for it, but it's like everybody else in front of you has said. No matter how hard we work, no matter how great the teachers are, we can't teach them a thing if they're not there. I'm going to hand the mic over to my counselor, Shannon Bruno. She was the head of this whole thing. She started this whole thing with Downtown Achieves, and she put this on and has kept it going, and she's a big part of it.
Shannon.
Thank you. I'll make it quick. I never really was into numbers or data, and they, when we met with Downtown Achieves and they asked what would be an area that we could really focus on, immediately I thought of attendance. So I just kept the data, and we've worked on incentives, I developed a plan, and really it's just getting the whole school community involved and competitive and engaged, and, you know, I'm all about school improvement, beautification, so it all just ties in together. So I'd like to thank Joe Morgan from UNLV, who first started with our data. So thank you, Joe, because you taught me a lot about keeping that going. So we just really focused on subgroups and just kept the data, and we're going to continue to keep that data and continue success.
Thank you. Great job. Great job. And next to you?
David Ramirez. I teach second grade at J.T. McWilliams. I would like to thank the Downtown Achieves, because they have really come forth with many, many different things and helped our school be able to get those opportunities to our students and to our parents, and that's crucial. If we don't have the involvement of the parents, the students are lacking the education that they need. So I would like to publicly thank the City of Las Vegas Council, Downtown Achieves, and many more people that have helped J.T. to get to where we are today. Thank you.
Fine, and would you give it to Dr. Barton?
I just want to reiterate that, you know, collective impact with education in the City of Las Vegas, and Dr. Hibbler, shout-out to you, I just think that your efforts have been fabulous, because I remember about two months ago, this is just another piece of evidence, a PACE-setter Award, on how this collective impact model is working with the Clark County School District and the City of Las Vegas. Two months ago, Mayor, in your office, we provided awards to students who read a significant number of minutes in safety programs in the evening. So we're on the same page. That's what's so exciting about this collective impact. This school right here, the leadership at this school, the hard work at the counseling office, I just want to say thank you. Others in the audience there from the district, their leadership as well, and the City of Las Vegas leadership, just a big thank you, because I think we're all on the same page. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.[1432.71][1432.71](Applause) Thank you. I mean, that is so true, and it is all about parenting. I mean, no matter what, it's getting your children to school, they can't learn if they're not in school, regardless of all the technology that we have. They need to be in the classroom, and what goes on every day excites them and ignites them and turns them on to the future of this all. So, Yoli, you're on.
Thank you. Let's see, if you guys can see me from this tall podium, and I'm only using it because I have some notes that I want to refer to, but I want to first say thank you to Mayor Goodman. Thank you, and all of City Council for having us here and for the opportunity to be with Lisa introducing this PACE-setter Award. So let me just say, it's great to be in Las Vegas. I had a little bit of fun yesterday. First, at an all-day meeting with lots of United Ways, talking about this important collective impact work, but also enjoying your wonderful city. And I'm here to acknowledge this important achievement, that of being recognized by the National Campaign for Grade-Level Reading as a PACE-setter community, one that indeed is setting the pace for other communities across the country by making measurable progress on student outcomes, specifically in the area of school attendance. The campaign has partnered with the National Civic League, began this partnership three years ago in 2012, to recognize communities across the nation that had created the most promising plans to address the literacy imperative. That is, the urgent need to ensure that all children are reading on grade level by the end of third grade. Most of us are familiar by now with the notion that up until third grade, children are learning to read. After that, they are primarily reading to learn. Hence, third grade is considered a powerful and important gateway or milestone grade. We know, for example, that children not on grade level by the end of third grade are significantly at greater risk of school failure and dropping out of school, which are statistically linked to a host of other negative life consequences. And we know that children will only achieve grade-level reading if they are in school every day, as the mayor said. But too many children from low-income families miss too much school and miss essential instruction, especially in the early years, where early literacy skills are so fundamental to what is needed to succeed, when the importance of learning to read pivots and moves to reading to learn. Las Vegas is among 30 communities around the country that are being recognized for making measurable progress as a result of successful implementation of your plan so far. These 30 communities have been singled out from nearly 170 that are now formally affiliated with the campaign as part of our national network. Las Vegas and our growing list of campaign communities nationwide will have another opportunity again in 2017 to apply for another All-American City Award, this time for generating measurable and significant progress in outcomes for children in all three major pillars of the campaign from where you began in 2012, which would be through the end of 2016. And these include the areas of school attendance, like we're acknowledging today, school readiness, and reducing summer learning laws. We are incredibly optimistic that Downtown Achieves and the City of Las Vegas will take this early progress on attendance in one school to every school with a significant number of students from low-income families, starting with your MBK schools where you've already made this commitment. I want to just very quickly read the acknowledgement before the award. So the Las Vegas, Nevada Grade-Level Reading Campaign is recognized as a 2014 PACE-setter for making measurable progress on student attendance outcomes. Las Vegas increased perfect attendance at McWilliams Elementary School by 14% and reduced truancy, or chronic absence, notifications, particularly for African-American and special needs students, by 5%. In collaboration with the Clark County School District, the local campaign is implementing several high-yield strategies to address and reduce chronic absence. These include school-level messaging, modeling, and incentives to nurture a culture and cultivate the habits of excellent attendance and positive priority outreach, starting at the beginning of the school year to prevent chronic absence. The Las Vegas Grade-Level Reading Campaign reaches approximately 12,500 low-income children. In partnership with Clark County School District, the campaign regularly tracks the percent of K-3 students from low-income families that are chronically absent as a key measure of its overall impact on student outcomes. Reflecting on the community's progress since it joined the campaign in 2012, I want to share a quote that Dr. Lisa Morris Hibbler provided to us. She said, "The City of Las Vegas..." Reflecting on the community's progress since it joined the campaign in 2012, I want to share a quote that Dr. Lisa Morris Hibler provided to us. She said, "The City of Las Vegas remains committed to addressing the achievement gap of students in the urban core. Students must be in class to learn, so it made sense to develop attendance campaigns that promote and reward attendance. We're extremely excited about the results, and so are we." So on behalf of the National Campaign, we present to you and to our school in particular, to Principal Chung, the Campaign for Grade Level Reading Pay Center Award, and we thank you for setting the pace and doing what we want all schools to be doing, engaging parents, providing the kind of safe culture, inviting school environment, so that kids are in school every day and are achieving and succeeding. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. This is absolutely awesome. But you know, it's interesting, because every day we read about stories and we hear information about things that sometimes are totally made up. This is not made up. This is fact. This is measurement. This is data. And we thank Dr. Morgan and his group out at UNLV. Please, I hear you're here. Stand up wherever you are. Where are you? There he is. There's Dr. Morgan. He can validate that these facts and this information is absolutely accurate, and we are so proud of what you do. And we do have another award, the one that's been given to the city on behalf of your excellence and what you're achieving every single day. And I'm going to give it to Dr. Morris Hibler, and we are so proud. Yoli, what a great comments you've made, and we've got a long way to go in this city, but we're making progress. We're on the pathway, and I'm going to give it back. I could tell she wants to say she has this. I see it coming. Here we are.
Thank you. And I know we're running a little bit behind time, but I want to thank everybody for coming out. So if I can just have everybody with Downtown Achieves and My Brothers Keeper Schools stand up, and I see even Captain Scott, I didn't even know you were coming today, but come on, stand up anyway you're part of it. You know, our next schools that are going to be -- thank you all. Our next schools that are going to be part of the pledge are Crestwood, Hollingsworth, Park, Lake, McWilliams is going to continue, Twin Lakes and Fight, those are all Downtown Achieves schools. And we're happy to now have the Las Vegas My Brothers Keeper Schools, Kermit R. Booker, Wendell P. Williams, Matt Kelly, H.P. Fitzgerald, and West Prep Elementary Schools. And also, I want to thank Dr. Tara Rains, the other half of the Joe Morgan team, who will be tracking all of the data that is so critical for us. And it's just really great for us to be doing this work. So thank you all. Thank you, council, for your support. And Dr. Geis, where is he? Yes, Dr. Geis. Brenda Larson Mitchell, Andre Long, who continues to take my text messages. Thank you, Andre, even when you're on vacation. Appreciate it. And also, Kawida Adams, thank you very much.
We are really proud of the work you're doing. We've got a lot, we have a lot more to do, and we are going to get there. Thank you, Dr. Morris Hibler. You are right on. And Yoli, thank you, and congratulations, Dr. Barton, thank you so much. Dr. Morgan, thank you. I love all these doctors. Dr. Morris Hibler, Dr. Barton, Dr. Morgan, thank you very much. I mean, this is a group effort for sure, but we are going to make a difference here. And so now, congratulations again. Great initiative. It takes one person to get something started, and look at how this has gone on. And my favorite year in school was second grade, so I'd love to come back. Mrs. Lawrence, I love second grade. So your kids are doing great. Wonderful. Great children out there. And now for our final item. As you know, I'm constantly, as are the members of our city council, always looking for legal advice. I happen to have two sons who are lawyers. I'm married to a lawyer, I have an uncle who's a lawyer. Yeah, you're shaking your head. True. It's a real, it's a difficult, difficult family to have so many lawyers. But we couldn't do a thing without our legal staff here at the city. So at this time, I would like to bring up Brad Jerwick, who's going to bring somebody else up and make an announcement, please, if you would. And we thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of council. When now county commissioner Lawrence Weakley was a member of the city council, he once honored somebody, and he said, "In life, you ought to give somebody flowers while they can still smell them." And I always remembered that. I thought that was just a beautiful thing to say. And so today, I want to give flowers to somebody who's a member of our staff, who is still around to smell them and who has achieved something pretty remarkable. I'm, of course, referring to Assistant City Attorney Brian Scott. And let me first say that Captain Scott and members of the Scott family are here today in the audience. If you'd stand for a moment, please, and be recognized, we'd appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Let me read something for a moment, because there's a lot on here, and I couldn't memorize it all. Brian earned his Bachelor of Science or Bachelor of Science in Business Administration from UNLV in 1988, and a Juris Doctorate in Law from Lewis and Clark University in 1991. He's been an attorney for 24 years. He's worked at the City Attorney's Office since 1996, and since 2005, has been my right arm in the Assistant City Attorney for the Civil Division of the City Attorney's Office. In that capacity, he has served in a number of roles. He is legal counsel to the Las Vegas City Council when I'm not here. He is legal counsel to the Planning Commission. He has served on various boards and commissions. He does general civil litigation, special improvement districts, condemnations, and all the land use zoning and planning for the City of Las Vegas. What he's here for today is something special, because in addition to all of those things -- yeah, Brian, get up here.
What high school? What high school? I need to know.
Rancho.
He's a Rancho Ram.
Rancho High School.
Since 2006, Brian has been a member of the State Bar of the state of Nevada, and he's a member of the Nevada Board of Continuing Legal Education between 2011 and 2014. He was the first elected African-American president of the Clark County Bar Association in 2005, and president of the Clark County Law Foundation in 2006. He's served as a board member, secretary treasurer, president-elect of the Clark County Bar Association from 2000 to 2004. That's not enough. From 1996 to 1999, he was the president of the Las Vegas chapter of the National Bar Association. He is the past chairman of the State Bar Nevada's Diversity Committee, and has served on the Nevada Supreme Court's Bench Bar Committee for three years. Brian has won numerous awards, which I will not go into, but I would like to tell you that this year, Brian is the president-elect of the State Bar of Nevada. This is not only an honor for Brian personally, I am honored to have Brian as a member of my staff, having achieved this. He is, to my belief, not only the first public attorney to be the head of the Clark County Bar Association, he's the first public attorney to be the head of the Nevada Bar Association. He is also the first African-American to hold both of these positions. Brian, in addition to what you do for the city, which is remarkable, these are remarkable personal accomplishments. I thought it was worth the moment of the council's time and the public's time to acknowledge that, and I want to thank you from the bottom of the heart for everything you do for us and for the city and for the state. You do.
I guess it's my turn to say a few words. I wrote a few words, and I promise, I will be quick. I promise you. I promise you. Promise you. First of all, I'd like to thank my family and friends for attending today. They're three pages, councilman. This is the treatment I get every day. So just I want to thank my family and friends for attending, and wish my brother, Captain William Scott, LVMPD, a happy birthday today. Today is his birthday. So happy birthday, brother. And also, today is my 19th year anniversary at City of Las Vegas. So today, I started 19 years ago, and I'm always amazed that Brad even hired me, because during my interview, I told him, I was about a five or six-year attorney at that time, and I told him I was kind of frustrated with the law. I didn't want to practice law. So that's probably the last thing you want to say at an interview, is that you don't want to practice law anymore. And for some reason, Brad called me, offered me the job, and I accepted, and since that day, I've never regretted it. I really enjoy working for all of you and working for the citizens of Las Vegas, and to make this a better place to live and work. I'm truly blessed to every day come to work to a job I enjoy, to work with people. If the people from the City Attorney's Office could please stand, that'd be great. This is the staff that I work with every day, a group of hard-working --
Bravo.
It's really a group of hard-working individuals, very professional staff, and I really, really enjoy, I've really enjoyed my 19 years working for the city. Mayor, when I took over the zoning and planning job, your husband told me that I had some big shoes to fill when Steve George left. So I'm hoping that someone could say the same thing about me when I leave, that they've got big shoes to fill as well.
Your shoes are bigger.
Shoes are -- size 12. You know, I've found that every day is a learning experience here, every day is something new and exciting, and that's why I love coming to work every day. I practiced law for 24 years, and it doesn't seem like a day goes by where I don't learn something new. And I'm really proud of my niece Amber, who's also, Amber Scott, she can stand up. She's going to be in her third year, she's in her third year at Whittier Law School. So she'll be joining us in the legal profession soon.
You saw us, everybody, from right to from their left to right.
Emma Hughes is one of my mother's best friends. We've known her since probably 1994. My sister-in-law Tina, which is William's wife. My niece Amber, my sister Cindy Foster, her daughter Monae Foster, her daughter, my daughter. My other niece, Bria Foster, excuse me, Bria, I can't even pronounce your name. My brother, Captain William Scott, and his son Antonio Scott, who is a new LVMPD officer who just joined the force this year.
Wonderful. What a family.
And I'm very, very proud of all of my nieces and nephews and my brother and sister as well. Since I began practicing law in 1991, I've been involved in many boards and commissions, as Brad has indicated. I felt that it's my responsibility as a bar member to try to make my profession better. I'm hoping that through my involvement, that I've done a little of that. I try every day to make sure that people know that lawyers are, we're not just the people that wanted, we're not ambulance chasers, we're not the people you see when you -- we want to be liked when you don't need us as well as when you need us as well, you know? We want to be, we want to be that profession which is seen as one of the honorable professions. And I'm hoping that I'm helping to make that a true reality. It's never easy being the first to do anything. As Brad said, I will be the first African-American bar president next year in the bar's 88-year history. It's always a little bit of anxiety when you try to go into something new, you do something differently, you look different. But I'm hoping that that's not a part of my presidency. I really want to just make sure that I'm doing the best for the citizens of Las Vegas as well as for all of the members, all the 11,000 members of the State Bar of Nevada. So just wanted to thank the mayor and city council for this honor. Thank you, Brad, for embarrassing me, because he knows I hate talking about myself. But I really do appreciate all of you, and I really appreciate the City of Las Vegas, and it's a great place to work, and I hope to work here a lot, lot longer. Thank you, Mayor.
We are so proud of you. We are so proud and so thrilled. We know you're going to have -- his shoes are smaller, so at the date that he retires, you don't have to worry about that.
Thank you.
Right? No, we're so proud. I'm kidding you. You know that, Brad. But it's wonderful, and I know the Nevada State Bar has new digs now, too. So he --
At 3100 West Charleston, we wanted to stay within the city boundary, so we are still up there.
And the building pays taxes, so we like that. We're just thrilled. So we're just so thrilled about you, and, you know, who cares about color? It doesn't matter. You're a human being of such great integrity and such intelligence, you've done, and you are a pride, though, to your entire constituency here in southern Nevada. And I'm sure you are of great pride to the African-Americans. But I don't care about color. I care about the human being, doing a job, being professional, having a great education, and showing it can be done, no matter what. You've done it. We are proud of this man and all of you, and thank you. And law enforcement, who's older? By how many years? And so -- oh, well, as of today, it might be four. Three, okay. So wonderful. So we expect to hear from you if he gets out of line. Right? Anyway, happy birthday. So we are now with this great, great acknowledgement and honor. What do we call this? Not an honorarium, but anyway, acknowledging you're fabulous. We're proud of you. So and thank you, everybody that's in our legal department. Boy, you keep us straight. So thank you for all your hard work, and we're going to go right into our agenda now. So thank you very much. Off we go. Who's the little ones are these? Okay, somebody left. Lisa, are you still here?
I think that Yoli.
Yes, Yoli.
I know.
Okay. We're going to keep going, and I just got to find our council persons. Okay, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments will be cross-reference to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state, and if it's an unusual name, and spell your name for the record. We'll set the time at one minute. And of course, anybody's here on that ordinance that we discussed, you know, Tuesday 1:30 in council chambers here to hear about the Fremont Street Experience entertainers. Yes, sir, good morning.
Good morning. My name is James Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N. I am here to speak, I came here today with my grandson to speak on item 74. And I understand, I was fully ready and prepared to leave when Attorney Jerwick said that, you know, there were other meetings that were going to take place prior to any true decision. What made me stay were the comments by Councilman Kaufman, because within those comments, by design or default, are the seeds of discrimination. And this is what I am so concerned about with this proposed language. Mr. Kaufman acknowledged those few talented buskers in the audience. We're not talking about talent, we're talking about freedom of expression, we're talking about freedom of speech. That's something that my family spent four generations since coming here from Ireland to fight for. And the kid who wears a, who's dressed up like Cupid and who exalts that portion of his character is expressing an idea. You may not like it, some people here may not like it, but he's got a dang right to have that opinion. He's got a right to express that opinion down there on that street. And I got to tell you, I'm going to be at these other meetings. This issue of Fremont Street has been raked over the cold time and time again. Who can, who cannot be here? And I remember, I spoke with Attorney Lichtenstein not too long ago, after the culinary put 5,000 --
Thank you.
-- people on that street.
Thank you.
5,000 people left, the attorney said, access has been defined.
Okay, thank you. We expect to see you on Tuesday at 1:30. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to come forward to speak at this point? Thank you, and please state your name.
Good morning, City Council of Las Vegas. My name is Michael T. Moore. I'm the president of general counsel of the Sonic Labor Visual Entertainers Union. We're recognized by the National --
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? Who you represent?
We represent the Sonic Labor Visual Entertainers Union. I'm the general counsel as well as the president. We're recognized by the National Labor Relations Board in 1999, and we're also recognized by the United Nations Labor Rights Organization of Geneva. I have some issues with this on the First Amendment and other human rights issues, where we're being treated as second-class citizens. I see an immense liability to the city and several other parties, including definable employers down on Fremont Street. And I wish to meet with you and share our concerns that we can avoid any kind of labor dispute or any other problems.
We appreciate it. Hopefully, we'll see you on Tuesday 1:30 in council chambers. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please come forward. Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item 9. For possible action, any items that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken table, withdrawing, held in advance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Agenda Item 11, for possible action to approve a 31-day extension of the modification and clarification agreement between the City Parkway 5 Incorporated and Citrus Symphony LLC. Staff has asked that to be stricken from the agenda. Agenda Item 39, advance item discussion of possible action regarding annual review of City Manager Betsy Fretwell. Staff has asked, we're going to obey that to the August 19 meeting.
stricken table, withdrawing, held in advance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem, please.
Yes, Your Honor, agenda item 11, for possible action to approve a 31-day extension of the modification and clarification agreement between the City Parkway 5 Incorporated and Citrus Symphony LLC. Staff has asked that to be stricken from the agenda. Agenda item 39, ban's item discussion, possible action regarding annual review of city manager Betsy Fretwell. Staff has asked, we're going to obey that to the August 19 meeting. Agenda item 75, review of condition 58617, a ban's item, applicant enterprise rent a car on 3,900 North Rancho. Staff has also requested that be obeyed till September 16, 2015. And agenda item 86, extension of time 59837, applicant owner Aristotle Holding has, applicant has requested that be obeyed to the August 19 meeting. Mayor.
That's your motion?
That's going to be my motion.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. Great, that motion carries. Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Agenda item 10, for possible action, approve final minutes by reference of the June 17, 2015 regular city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve the minutes of June 17. Please vote and please post. And may I ask, while we're posting, what happened to the July 1 minutes? We don't have them, we had them in the preliminary RDA meeting to approve both the 17th and July 1. Pardon?
The councils weren't done, they'll be done for the next meeting.
Okay, so, okay. All right, moving right along, that motion carried. So we will now go into, and you just said get rid, yeah, the consent agenda and you have just stricken number 11. So agenda items, well, 11, which has been stricken through 35 with the exception, no others. On the consent agenda, considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward? Any items you want to bring forward, anybody?
Seeing none, Mayor. I would have been motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you very much, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda. Please vote and please post.
Mayor, before the vote, please, Councilman Kaufman is.
Did we have some people in the audience that were going to speak on item 33 or am I wrong?
All those that are in reference to the Fremont Street Experience ordinance are coming back on Tuesday at 1:30 for their comments. And then we'll continue.
That was a VIP, 33, not Fremont Street. So it was in conjunction with, I thought I saw somebody wave a hand. If not, thank you, Mayor.
No, was there anything? Okay, we're good. Okay, so we need Councilman Barlow and Councilwoman Tarkanian to vote before we can post, please. Councilman Barlow.
Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and vote, but I do have a question mark by item number 22 and maybe I can speak to staff, maybe someone in public works in regards to this item. No, no, I'll speak to them at sidebar.
Okay, thank you. All right, so there's a motion, there's been a motion, please vote, it does pass. Thank you very much.
Mayor, at this time, I would request that agenda items 47 and agenda items 37.
In that order?
In that order, Mayor, with your permission.
47 be pulled forward and then 37?
Then 37.
Okay, everybody got that? We are pulling forward agenda item 47, which reads, "Discussion for possible action to approve the renaming of an unconstructed park in Sky Canyon Development located in the northeast corner of Lone Mountain Road and Schaumburg Road, 8:00 p.m., 126-01-401-03, in honor and memory of Officer Igor Soldo." This is in Ward 6 with Councilman Ross. And I understand Mr. Hackers here, good morning.
Good morning. Mayor and council, it's with great pleasure that the Parks Advisory Board is making a recommendation to go ahead and, and name an un, yet-to-be unbuilt park in the Sky Canyon Development after Officer Igor Soldo Memorial Park. This comes to us after discussions with Mayor Protem and, and trying to do something to have some significance in that area and to honor these, these two fallen officers. And so the Parks Advisory Board, unfortunately, the chair or the vice chair couldn't be here and so it's, it's my pleasure to make that recommendation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hacker. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. I called this forward because, and Mr. Hacker, thank you very much, your team's been fabulous and it was actually brought to my attention from one of your team members, so please express my appreciation and I, I think I can say on behalf of the Metropolitan Police Department as well, but Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to ask Captain Fletcher to come up from the Northwest Area Command as he and I have been working on this as well with, with the Parks Commission as well. Captain.
Good morning. Thank you. For the record, I'm Rich Fletcher, I'm a captain with Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. Your Honor, Mayor Protem, City Council, thank you for what you do for our community. Here we stand again, doing the right thing for the right reason at the right time. And, you know, Igor loved his family, wife, child. He chose this nation, he chose this community to raise that family and to serve, and I think it's only fitting that we approve this measure and recognize his service to this community. On behalf of Sheriff Joe Lombardo, the men and women of Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, we wholeheartedly support this, this endeavor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain, I appreciate your attendance and being here and your support as well as the sheriffs and I know the entire department feels the same way. With that being said, I'm going to show a video here in a minute if I can keep the tears out of my eyes for a few seconds here, but it's important to know, Captain, that this community loves and respects the men and women who put that uniform on every day and protect our families and protect our communities. And I say that, too, because I have a retired officer sitting right next to me and I think he feels the same way as well, but we, we can't do enough for the men and women of the department and you know that. With that being said, Mayor, with your permission and council members, Mrs. Soldo couldn't be here today, so generous KCLV Channel 2 Nancy Byrne did a little taping of her, so I'd like to show that video at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Igor always, he was a great father, like he always loved to, to take Logan to the park and I think our last trip that we took, we took tons of pictures, they were at the beach and stuff, like he was a great dad. So I know he would have loved to have an experience with him, like being able to play at the park. So definitely something that we still do, so I would, I would for sure bring him and play on everything there. When people think of Vegas, they immediately picture the towering hotels, flashing lights, bumping music, glimpses of skin and the party atmosphere. What people don't know that behind this crazy facade of this city, it has a giant heart of gold. The city is absolutely amazing. My view on the heart of this city was forever changed on June 8. Prior to this even, Igor and I considered this our home. We've traveled all over the world, but each time we'd fly in and see the familiar side of the strip, we'd be filled with a sense of home. On that horrific day almost 14 months ago, the city wrapped its loving arms around my son, Logan, and I. We felt every single prayer and thought this city sent our way. We were on the receiving end of so many heartfelt emotions and gestures. It seems cliche, but it really did make this unimaginable process more bearable. Even the thought of having a park dedicated to the memory of my husband is very surreal. I've been thinking a lot lately about what I would tell my son and how to approach the subject. The task seems overwhelming to say the least. Somehow it's very comforting to have a place to go that we can feel at peace and surrounded by the love of this city.
That, Mayor and council members, is the right way to remember Igor Soldo and his commitment and dedication to the city and hers as well. And Captain, our hearts go out to the families, you know that. And it's a sign that our city won't stand for this and that we stand behind the men and women who wear the badge. Mayor, you had the opportunity to meet Andrew the other day and what a strong woman, strong will, great personality, and she's not going to let this slow her down, so I'm comforted in that. And if there's no more comments from the council or from, from the audience, Mayor, I would move to approve agenda item 47.
Thank you. Every day the sacrifice and families don't know if their loved ones are coming home. So there's a motion, please vote and please post. That motion carries and we look forward to the development and the park. Thank you. Councilmen, please.
Your Honor, may I say a word? I'm sorry, I should have said it on the item before it was approved. May I speak on that for just a second? Your Honor?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, are you in a moment of silence? I apologize for interrupting.
Thank you all.
Your Honor.
Beautiful, two beautiful men.
I'd like to say that the conjunction of having people here in the audience who ridicule us for attempting to bring some order to the chaos of Fremont Street and other places where people perform and/or beg for money in masks and in various states of undress, should also remember that Officer Soldo was assassinated by a member of the busking community and that those two people who finally ended up in the Walmart near Nellis and created their own private Alamo there in their death after assassinating our two fine officers, had performed in masks on Fremont Street. We didn't know who they were, we didn't know and the public didn't know what they were like and what they were going to do. And so keep that in mind, those of you who are watching and listening and kind of wonder what all the fuss is about, that there's a lot of stuff involved here. And therefore, there will be public hearings on that. And if I'm there to listen, then I'll probably be bringing up the very same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, beautiful, Ted, thank you very much. That was a tragic day.
And up for mayor, I just wanted to add to what Mr. Kaufman said and sometime I'd like to share some of the letters I received from people from out of state that love to come to Las Vegas who don't want to come anymore down Fremont Street and why. Because what they see is not entertainment for these families who come. Some of it is and some of it's great, but mixed within it, mixed within it is some that is not good and that is hurting our community reputation-wise and financially. I just want to make that comment. And I believe very, very much in the freedom of speech, but I also believe very much in the rights of others for what they're subjected to see.
Okay, and at this point, we are going to move on to agenda item number 37. Public hearing for possible action regarding a new four-year contract agreement between the Las Vegas Peace Officers Association, LVPoa, and the city of Las Vegas, which will include a supplemental tripartite trust agreement with the Teamster Security Fund to provide health care coverage to this bargaining unit. This is for fiscal year 2016, augmentation cost of $549,700 general fund. And so, good morning, Ms. Fretwell. And Mr. Tarwater.
Good morning, Mayor and members of the council. I'm very pleased to stand before you today to bring a new contract for you for approval with our POA labor union. I'd like to start by saying thank you to Larry Davis and Scott Edwards and the executive team and the negotiating team. They really worked tirelessly on this agreement with our very talented human resources team that you see before you, as well as the city attorney's office, Morgan Davis, who tirelessly works to get the language right in these agreements. You know, a lot of times our corrections officers are the unsung heroes. They do their jobs quietly, behind the scenes. It is a huge function for our city from a public safety standpoint and I think a lot of times that gets lost because they do such an incredible job, day in and day out, protecting our community, but also protecting those that are in our custody, which I think sometimes gets lost in a lot of the conversation. So I'd just like to say thank you to the men and women of the POA, the command staff of detention and enforcement, for all they do for this community to keep, keep us safe and whose safety is entrusted to us while individuals are under our protective care. I think that we've done a great job in negotiating this agreement. As you know, one of our main goals as we work with our labor unions is to try and come up with a fair and competitive compensation strategy for the individuals that work with us at the city of Las Vegas. I believe we've accomplished that in this agreement. It is a longer-term agreement, longer than we've been approving them in the last little bit, so I want to have Dan talk through the details of the changes, the term, and what the overall impact will be, because there are several components to that. Overall, I believe that in this agreement, we've restored some competitiveness that we lost in our earlier contract when we were in the middle of the recession. Our corrections officers stepped up, as did all of the other bargaining units, and gave to keep our city sound. So we've, we've been working to restore some of those things to retain that competitiveness because we've been experiencing some high turnover in areas that really, we don't want to have that kind of turnover, we want people to stay once we train them and not leave and go to another agency. So I believe we've addressed what I feel was a significant concern in our ability to continue to provide that excellent service to our community. So we have agreed to adjust wages in this, in this effort and at the same time, we've created some additional sustainability factors going forward. So things like caps on sick leave and annual leave are still in there. We have components like a sick leave bonus for people who come to work every day on shift so that we can keep people on the floor when we need them and not have to run up our overtime, for instance, to keep our post staff. So I believe that we've done some really great things to keep us sustainable, have that well-oiled machine down at our detention center working very well and serving the public the way it should with a very competent and capable staff. As required under NRS 288, I want to share with you the total impact for this year, which is $549,000, pardon me, $549,700 for year one, but because this is an extended contract over four years, the total contract cost is $2 million. So the $549, $550,000 rounded up will be integrated into this year's budget and then in the subsequent budgeting years, we would plan for those additional costs in each year as they're applicable. What I'd like to do is turn it over to Mr. Tarwater and to Mr. Davis so that, I believe Mr. Davis has to read a statement into the record, oh, not on this one, excellent, Morgan, and have Dan go through the details of the components of the agreement. And I know that Mr. Edwards is here on behalf of the POA and I'd like to have him come make some comments as well. And we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. So thank you, Mayor and council, for entertaining this item and we'll be happy to answer any questions at the completion of the presentation.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Dan Tarwater, for the record, human resources director. First, I'd like to thank our bargaining team members, both from the POA and the city. Mike Scousie was our lead negotiator and key spokesperson. I'd like him to come forward and go through some of the details with you, but I'd also like at this time to thank Michelle Freeman, Michael Brown, Sue Brown, Andy Spurlock, Jessica Lechlo and obviously our great city attorney standing next to me, Morgan Davis. So with that, Mike, I'd like you to go through the details, please.
Mayor, members of the council, Michael Scousie, manager, employee relations. With me is Scott Edwards, Scott will be the spokesperson for the POA this afternoon. I'm going to be brief, I'll give you a little bit of background on the contract first. This is a four-year agreement. We've, we've typically negotiated for a little less time, but we thought that this was the right amount for this particular contract. We began negotiations for this contract in early February of this year. The contract was to expire at the end of June. And by the end of June, we had basically TA'd or come to an agreement on 12 of the 31 articles. So we had 19 left to go and we had a very little time left. And I got a call from Scott and Scott said, could myself and Larry come over and meet with myself and one other member of the management team and hammer out the rest of these articles? And so that's what we did. So it took us five months to negotiate 12 articles and it took us three hours to do the other 19. So bargaining can be done in a shorter time as long as you can get the parties together. I'll talk a little bit about the wages real quick because it's obviously the most important part of the agreement. Before we start any bargaining, we do the very same thing, we do a wage market analysis, we find out where we are relative to the market before we make any type of economic offers. In the, in this case, in the case of POA or our corrections folks, that would include the officers and the sergeants, we do have a two-tier wage structure and then organization, which means we're paying two different rates for the work to be performed. The newer inbound folks are paid a lesser rate and that was purposely negotiated several years ago. And when that rate was set for the, what we call the tier-two folks, the lower tier, it was significantly below the market. it was significantly below the market. And when we did this most recent market analysis, what we found is that they were still about 18 and 1/2 percent below the market. And so, we made an effort in this agreement to bring them up to speed. And that's why you see in the three years of this contract for that tier, a 6%, 6%, and 6% increase. That's only going to be for the folks that are on that lower tier, which is about 21 people out of the 200. So, it's a small amount, but we need to bring them back up to the market. They still won't be back up to the tier-one, but they'll be approaching the tier-one, which is what we tried to do. For the folks on the upper tier, which is where the predominance of our folks are, what we agreed to was an increase of 2% in year one, 2% in year two, 2 and 1/2% in year three, and then a 4% lump sum in year four. I'll quickly tell you how we got to those numbers. The 2% in year one is consistent with what we're giving Metro, what we're giving Metro P-Pace, what we're giving City Fire, and what Clark County Fire is getting. So, we thought that 2 was the right number in year one. It's also consistent with CPI, which was 1.6%. For year two of the agreement, at 2%, we're projecting CPI to be somewhere between 1.7 or 1.8, so we thought 2 was a fair number. In year three of the agreement, we do expect a little bit of uptick, so we agreed to a 2 and 1/2% wage increase. Year four, and this is significant for us, similar strategy to what we had with CEA, we're going to give a lump sum amount of money, so we're going to apply a percentage factor against the base wage. It will be paid in lump-sum form, which means it does not become part of the base wage. It is not a perishable number, so we're able to save some money there. So, when you look at the agreement in its entirety, I would say to you that is a fair agreement, and it is a reasonable agreement as far as the economics are concerned. Just a couple of other small items I want to touch on. Betsy talked about the sick leave bonus. For this particular group, up to this point, we've had kind of also a two-tier structure as far as the bonus. We paid $1,000 for folks that missed 20 hours or less. We paid $1,500 for those that missed 10 hours or less. What the chief wanted to do was reward for perfect attendance, which means zero hours of absence. And so, we increased the amount to $2,500, but that's going to be specifically for people that miss zero hours or less in a year. The only thing that would be excluded would be bereavement, because obviously, death is unpredictable, and that's the only exclusion to that. So, we thought that was fair. Holiday overtime, I want to talk about this for just a quick minute. We were paying a penalty for hours worked on a holiday. My belief is that this was a misinterpretation of the contract, but we fixed it in this agreement. So, if a person works on a holiday, then they're going to get holiday overtime pay, the same as any other person, that's going to be paid at a rate of time and a half. They still get paid for the holiday, as we all do, so it works out to double time and a half, but that is the right amount of money that should be paid. So, when we talked about that item, and we talked about it for a long time, we did come to an agreement on that. SB 241, Morgan is going to speak to this issue a little bit more, but this has to do with the repayment of association hours, so hours that are worked in behalf of the union, which are going to be reimbursed to the management. And in addition, we have put some evergreen language into this agreement, which means that when we negotiate a contract, if we get to the end and we're not settled, then the non-economic portions of it will not continue. So, in other words, things like steps, longevity, or the application of any other economics will not continue on into the future until we have a successor agreement. So, Morgan is going to speak about SB 241.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Your honor, Councilwoman Morgan Davis, Las Vegas City Attorney's Office. As Mr. Scousie said, one of the provisions in this proposed agreement was direct reflect of SB 241, which was recently passed. The section that's most applicable was Section 1 of that bill, which changed the landscape on how employers like us can deal with release time for union activities. Our reading of the law was there was two options under the new law. You could allow, continue to allow for release time if the employee association had direct reimbursement for all costs, or for a concession that was reached in an agreement that offset those costs. It's a different way of doing business. Our approach was, we really understand the importance of union leave for union business. It helps us oftentimes, but we needed direct reimbursement. We had some scraps with the association, but at the end of the day, we came up with, we all believe, is a rather fair number. We did it on average visiting salaries, so they still will be able to use city time to do the important association business. We negotiated an hourly rate of $65, so for every hour that they need to leave their jobs to do association business, they'll be reimbursing the city at the rate of $65 an hour. We think it's a template that we're going to attempt to use for all of our bargaining units going forward, providing that that section of the law changes. I don't know if you've got any questions on SB 241, Section 1, or how we did that, but that's the approach, and I think we're the first one out of the gates to get it in paper in the Southern Nevada.
Good job. Good job there. Comments, questions?
All right. Try not to mess this up. Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and council. Yes, I'd definitely like to thank the city management team for the negotiations that we've been through.
Would you repeat your name and your representation, too, please?
My name is Scott Edwards. I'm the vice president of Las Vegas Peace Officers Association. We represent 200 corrections officers down at the city of Las Vegas jail. I also would like to thank the city management team for negotiating this contract with us. I'd like to recognize our negotiation team, our president, Larry Davis, our former treasurer, Donald Patton, representatives Alan Tremar, John Gerchek, Mike Weyand, Todd Chaffee, and Thomas Ratch, as well as our attorney, Michael Langton. We do feel that this is a fair contract that represents our membership. The members that we represent work hard every day and deal with a increasingly volatile population that comes through, and we feel that this will take care of them appropriately so they can focus on their job rather than focus on their paychecks or their compensation.
Thank you for your hard work to get this on. We really appreciate it, and everyone on your list that you spoke about, plus all the personnel that's just been here helping us move the city forward. Very grateful.
That's our goal, ma'am.
Thank you. So, I would entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I had some questions.
Oh, questions, sorry. Please go ahead.
Just for my understanding, and I do think you've worked very hard, and I want you to know you're much appreciated, just so I obtain more knowledge. When you say annual leave cap at 250 hours for recent hires, how many days does that turn out to be? I mean, mathematically, how many days for 250 hours?
Well, it's going to be between 10 and 12. I mean, they're working 10- and 12-hour days over there, so...
So, they're working 10- or 12-hour days. If they worked 8-hour days, it'd be 31 days. I'm asking this because I'm from education, where we've, when our education unions came to the cap, they got very criticized for having summers off. And basically, I'm learning that there are a lot of entities and professions that do have a lot of time off, and it's almost the same as the teachers. So, it's just interesting to me. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Your honor, I think you could answer or verify the information I have that I've been seeking and have heard of our legal staff. They're not on the floor right now, but I think what I know is that there have been very few, if any, prisoner abuse cases coming out of our jails. Settlements, I can't recall paying or approving any abuse cases, you know? Because that's a hard job, and the abuse correctional officers take is a lot different than a law enforcement officer on the street. When you attempt to verbally or physically abuse an officer on the street, they have their ways of compensating. In a jail, if someone spits on you, vomits on you on purpose, or does something like that, you know, sometimes you'd think they'd have a right to react, they don't. And I thought that it's important to just know the answer to that question.
You're correct, councilman. I attribute that to the professionalism of our department, the members, our management team, that keeps that in check, if you will. You know, fortunately for us, we come to work and we focus on the job at hand, and you know, while we're not perfect by any means, this is a high liability area for the city of Las Vegas, and I think our team does an awesome job down there in reducing the liability for the city.
My lawyer just arrived, and I think he said, "Do I need a defense, or am I okay?"
I was just going to add, Councilman Coffin, that in one of the ways that, one of the strategies that we're employing now to ensure that high level of service is to re-initiate the accreditation process, which you authorized additional positions in this function and in the marshal's function in this budget, to ensure that we're having outside review of our policies, practices, and procedures in our facility and in our practices so that we're not only showing the outcome by hopefully managing and reducing liability in a very precarious service delivery function for the city, but also ensuring that we have outside eyes on what we do so that we continue to get better and continue to mitigate and reduce future liability. It's really important for us to recognize, this is a unique population that we serve and not an easy one to serve. And so, in addition to what Scott just shared with you, I thought it was important for you to be aware that we are pursuing additional strategies to continue that track record running strong.
Yeah, well, I think that it's worth rewarding the patience and self-control that has to be part of this job. It's a whole different animal. I used to work with the COs in the state prison system, and they were paid the least of all our law enforcement officers there, yet they took the most abuse. And so, it's a thankless job, but yet it's a difficult one we really need because, you know, everybody in the jail's got to have rights. They've got to be treated like humans, and it sounds like the results are, the proof is in, the lack of complaints, lawsuits, and settlements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, with that, I'll give final comments while I make the motion. Scott, please pass on to your members how much we truly appreciate it. Councilman Anthony, we're just commenting on how difficult that job was, and I think some of us have an idea, but some of us have a really good idea, so it is a very difficult job for what you do. So, with that, appreciate the leadership demonstrated by both sides. And with that, Mayor, I would move to approve Agenda Item 37.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for your diligent work and working to a great resolution here. We really appreciate it. So, we will move on to Agenda Item Number 36. Discussion for possible action regarding the allocation of additional medical marijuana establishment registration certificate for medical marijuana dispensaries from Clark County. And of course, I'm going to sit through this. If there, I don't imagine there will be, well, there will be a motion I will be abstaining because I have a son who's involved in one of the entities, but I will continue to go forward. So, good morning.
Good morning. Your honor, for the record, Karen Delston, deputy planning director. As you all are aware, in November of 2014, the state of Nevada issued 12 dispensary certificates within the city of Las Vegas. 11 of those selected by the state matched city land use and licensing compliance permits, and your staff is moving forward with those 11 applicants at this time. The 12th dispensary, we do not have a final determination on that opening at this point in time. The state is working through their process on that dispensary. During the 2014 process, in Clark County, there were eight dispensaries selected and ranked by the state of Nevada that failed to receive local approval by Clark County. We understand at the county commission meeting today, the state or the county is determining whether they will be opening their process to those eight applicants to seek land use before the county commission. The city of Henderson has, through action of their council, requested that in that process, the county commission, consider allocating one of those original eight dispensaries that did not receive county approval as an open position and transferring that through their authority under state law to allocate those original 40 dispensaries to allocate one of those to the city of Henderson. The item before you today is for discussion of the council to determine whether you would like to send a similar letter to Clark County at this time.
Thank you very much. Any comments, please?
Yes, Mayor, I appreciate that. Ms. Delston, thank you very much, and I think this, I think a few of us wanted to see this agenda item on the agenda today. In light of that, and Ms. Delston, in light of the 11 applicants that we have in the hopper, so to speak, can you tell the council, I know you have behind in our briefings, but I'd sure like the public to know as well, how many of those applicants are actually making movement towards opening their dispensaries? If you could do that for us, please, with your permission, Mayor?
Please.
Thank you. We have three applicants that are ready for consideration of your licensing. They've requested inspections. Our staff has been out this week. We'll be out next week, working with the state of Nevada. On those inspections, you'll see a cultivation facility, a dispensary, and a laboratory on your August 19 agenda, and in one of your September agendas, you will see an additional dispensary. Other applicants are at a variety of stages. We have several who are working with us and working with our staff to update their plans. We have several that have not updated their plans at this point in time, and we have several that have not pulled any building permits or submitted anything to begin that portion of their process. We have informed all of our applicants to respond to licensing in writing by August 10 on their progress to date, as the city council, those compliance permits that were issued by the city council were only obligated for the period of one year from when that state ranking list came out. So, after November 3, the city council no longer has an obligation to process the license applications for those compliance permits if they are not open and operating at that time.
And thank you, Mayor, if I could continue.
Please.
Thank you, Ms. Delston. I appreciate that, and I asked you that because it's a concern of mine for all of the rest of these, for the ability for them to open their doors. So, what I'm saying is, I don't think they're all going to, and that's a big concern of mine. So, I think in light of Henderson's ask to the county for one, I think likewise, I would like to make a motion in the effect that we ask for four of those eight dispensaries. It's still uncertain whether the county's going to give it to Henderson or us, but I think it's incumbent for us to serve the citizens of this community in a responsible way and providing them with this service that's come through the legislature to the local governments. So, I'd like to open that up with the mayor's permission, the discussion, because there's some great applicants out there, some medical professionals and that never had, even saw the light of day because of the way the state ranked these things. So, it's a concern of mine for the ones we have not opening their doors, and it's a concern of mine that we get the right players to the game at the table. So, I'll leave it at that for an open discussion, Mayor, before I make a motion.
Please go ahead.
I'm Anna, Mayor.
Yes, please.
I believe that Karen has worked very hard to help those who have been passed to be able to complete their, whatever they need to complete to get started. I don't think there's been anything on our side of the city hindering that progress. So, these people who haven't made it through yet, some of them are very close to opening, and some evidently haven't cared enough to even file for a permit. My concern is, this comment to request four more dispensaries within, from the county, as Henderson has requested one, that's fine if those dispensaries are placed evenly throughout the city. They are not. And my area has had an overload of dispensaries, and I believe that you should have the medical dispensaries and do, just as the people who are pro-medical marijuana came and told us, have it available so that you can obtain it if you're ill and you need it for medical purposes. I believe in that strongly. But when they came, they said it should be near anybody, so it's just like, you know, if you want to drive to a certain drugstore or something like that. But that's not the case. It's not the case. You don't have any. Anthony doesn't have any. Beers has one, which is right on the borderline. It's practically in my ward also. So, my understanding, I feel very strongly that the people in Ward 1 don't want any more dispensaries. They feel their needs, at least the ones who have spoken to me, are being met, and I think that we've accepted our responsibility in that. So, my concern is, if you make a motion, please not have it in the, at least in my ward, where we have so many already. Take one in your ward, or, you know, they say, "Well, we can't find the land, we can't make the profit," so you make a little less profit. the land. We can't make the profit." So, you make a little less profit. And then they said they wanted it for medical reasons, but look at where they came. Almost all their requests are right near the strip. And that sort of makes me suspect, was it for medical or was it for profit? Are you really wanting to help people, or is profit what you want? And I understand helping the people. I'm all for that. We've done that in Ward 1. Thank you.
Mayor, I hate to do this, but Councilwoman, I'd like to respond to that. And Councilman Coffin, I know you want to speak as well, but I've just been informed that, Mayor, we need to take another five-minute break for KCLB to reset again. Oh, between noon and 1:00? Oh, now, I'll read the whole note, Steve. Okay, I got it. Between noon and 1:00. So with that, Mayor, may I respond to Councilwoman Tarkany?
I think I'm going to fire you in a minute here. God. All right, please go on.
Councilwoman, I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I think as we reset this and reexamine this, that will give us the ability to look at this geographically. I concur with you that they've been, the majority of those approved are in yours and Councilman Coffin's ward. I think Councilman Barlow may have a couple. I can't remember clearly, but the rest of us do not, and it's not serving the public, you know. So, I am keenly aware of that. I think this will give us the ability to actually reset, take a step back, reexamine where those ones that we want, and see, number one, first, if Clark County gives us four.
Yeah. If we're really helping people, if that is really what we're trying to do, let's put them where people can get them.
Agreed. Councilman Coffin, it's coming, there.
Okay, Councilman Coffin, please.
May I address you, kind lady? We have that problem because at least half of our council did not want them in their neighborhoods. You know, very few out west, or even in the central core to the west of the Strip, few of them were wanted. I mean, they were said, "Don't apply." And so, it's logical that they would be in places that made sense, the industrial areas or the adult entertainment areas where not everything goes, but certainly it's considered to be a place where one would not look down on a nice dispensary of marijuana. So, you know, it's an accident, maybe, or maybe we created the situation, which I think is the latter. I think we really did that way. Even though there are people here on this council who supported marijuana, they recognized that the idea of having it in their neighborhoods just didn't make sense to them and their neighbors. And so, that's what we ended up with. We had to reject somebody from your own district, which then, now, may be the subject of a lawsuit. I don't know, because you didn't want them in your ward, so.
They were too close together, too.
But in any event, the criteria that were created for Ward 1 sort of made it mandatory that they go someplace else. See, so really, "We are the enemy," Pogo said sometimes, and so therefore, I think we probably have to shed, you know, shoulder some of the blame for the centralization of these dispensaries.
Mr. Coff, I just have to answer that. In the situation to which you're referring,
it was two dispensaries close together, too. It wasn't that we didn't put one in the area. There is one in the area. It's just that one of the two that applied is not in the area, and the one of the two we took where it was less interresidential. But it was not turning down medical marijuana. That's there, in that area, that would serve the people that were there where the other dispensary was wanting to go to. You didn't, we just wanted to spread them out.
Send them to me.
I know that's your feeling, and believe me, if I could, I would, right away.
I love that attitude.
Send them to me.
Councilman Coffin's got a great attitude, Mayor. So, if you're abstaining, are you continuing to run this then?
I will just, well, then, at this point, I mean, is there a motion?
Yeah, I would actually like to direct staff to request to Clark County. Do we need a motion, or can we just direct staff? Mr. Gerbick?
We need to agree to it.
We need to agree to it first. So, I guess I would make a motion, or ask the city council if they agree to sending a request to Clark County for four additional medical marijuana dispensaries. Is that right, Ms. Fretwell? That's my motion, Mayor.
Okay, there is a motion, and as I indicated, I will be abstaining. So, there's a motion. Please.
Could I ask a question?
Of course.
Are you just saying four, are you going to just put anything on it to have them more equitably sent through the county? I mean, through our city? Or are you just leaving it the way it is? I just need to know as to how I vote.
I'm misunderstanding. I'm asking the city council if they support Ms. Fretwell sending a letter to Clark County requesting four additional dispensaries from their eight.
And utilizing the same terms that we've had had in the past?
Yes.
Okay, then.
Okay, so, there is a motion. We need to hear from Councilwoman, and then if you'll It didn't take yet, Councilwoman. You have to vote again? Yeah, it didn't go. So, push one more time?
I did. It's a no. It's not, it's not working here.
Okay. And please post. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. So, that would be directed. Ms. Fretwell, you have your marching orders. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 38, Report by Karen Duddleston, Deputy Planning Director, Regarding the Scope of the Study for Restricted Gaming in Taverns.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the July 1 city council meeting, staff was requested to prepare a scope of work to evaluate restricted gaming and tavern establishments in order to evaluate the various models and revenue sources for such businesses. In addition, at that time, the city manager directed licensing to cease issuing temporary business licenses to these establishment pending city council evaluation of the various models of tavern and incidental restricted gaming. As a result, you will be seeing those temporary licenses on your agenda for the city council to determine whether we will be issuing temporary restricted gaming licenses in conjunction with taverns. I've asked Mary McLahone, our Business License Section Manager, who's prepared this scope of work and is working with our various tavern and restricted gaming businesses throughout our community, to give a short presentation to review that scope of work and the evaluation process going forward.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. For the record, Mary McLahone, Section Manager for Business Licensing. Right now, as of last week, we have 123 tavern licenses with restricted gaming. Restricted gaming is authorized by alcohol land use, and there's a few exceptions to this where they would need an additional special use permit, and those would be locations such as Town Center, Cliff's Edge, Summerlin, and there are also a few others. Right now, our focus is on a combination of two business licenses, taverns and restricted gaming. The tavern license allows those locations to have up to 15 slot machines. There are three business models that basically are in use for the slot operations. We have those that are owner-participate, owner-operated, and those are, those are taverns that are owned and operate their own slot machines. We also have participation agreements, and this is where the slot root operator or the tavern may actually hold the gaming license. There's a sharing of revenues. Sometimes it's a 70 or 30 split. And what determines who holds that gaming license, it's usually the entity that has the larger share of revenues. The third business model is where there's a space lease agreement. The space lease agreement, in this situation, the slot root operator actually holds the gaming license and pays a fee to the tavern to have those slot machines in that location. The fee, on average, is usually between $300 to $500 per machine per month. As far as fees goes, the alcohol license, there's a flat fee and also a gross fee associated with those licenses. And the gaming fee for business licensing, they pay us $60 semi-annually for each slot machine. Now, that fee has been locked in place by NRS since April 27th of 1981. So, the scope of the study will encompass reviewing the state and local regulations and fees, and what we're looking for are any correlations between the operational models and those revenue sources for business. So, what we're asking for is information on the floor space for the entire business as well as for the patrons. We're taking a look at the hours of operation and the kitchen operations. While many of these are open 24/7, a lot of times their kitchen operations are not. We're looking at the number and type of employee assignments, and we're looking closely at whether they have a kitchen, and if they do, is it a full or partial? And also, if they have a restaurant, what type of restaurant facilities? Is it very large, or is it small? We're asking for seats for the restaurant, the number of gaming, and also lounge, non-gaming seats. We're asking for the number of slot machines, because although they're allowed to have up to 15 slot machines, a lot of these locations may have less than 15 slot machines. We're also interested in finding out of those slot machines, which ones are actually in the bar tops. As mentioned earlier, there's different types of slot machine ownership, so we're asking them for information on the different type of ownership that they have. And last but not least, we're asking for gross revenue, and we're not only asking for gaming revenue, but we're also asking for alcohol and food sales as well. So, our next steps. So, the request in the form of a letter actually went out last week to the 123 locations, and the requested return date is actually August 17th. So, after August 17th, we're going to begin analyzing this information. That'll probably take some time, and we might even need to contact a few of the locations. We'll be reviewing the state and local regulations for any correlating factors, but we hope to get back to you sometime in October. We'll present what we have for findings, any possible recommendations, and then we'll get direction from you, council, as to what we should be looking at, if we should be drafting a new ordinance, or what other changes we might need to make. And so, we're hoping if there's proposed ordinances that need to be done, we can bring those back to you in November.
Thank you very much. I was noticing, this is a new edition of your questionnaire. If, in fact, you reissue something, can you make sure that you date at the bottom so we know which is the most recent one? I see some changes that were made, and that's very helpful. What was the date of the most recent that we found on our desks that you reissued?
The most recent is from July 28th.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate what you're doing. It'll be interesting as we go forward. Appreciate it. Thank you. So, that was a report only?
Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment if I could.
Please.
I think that's a very thorough way you're trying to get to the problem. You know, and I think it's the first time it's been done that thoroughly, and I really feel good about the city having us, instead of just going on past, or a rumor here or there, you're really getting the facts out to make decisions.
And it really is something that, I mean, to add to that, I think the city needs to stand on its own, and because the county has handled it one way, it is not necessarily going to be what we're going to do. This is going to be thoroughly vetted, and we're going to have all the information, and we're not going to stop till we have every piece of information that they can garner and get to us. So, we do this the right way and do it one time. So, thank you very, very much. Agenda Item 39 has been abayed to the 19th of August. Is that correct? Okay, this one. Okay, so, and 40 are being trailed to be heard. Okay. We are going to be having, okay. Agenda items obeyed to the 19th, and Items 40 and 41 are going to be trailed to be heard after we do go into closed session later on in this agenda. So, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 42. Okay, whoops, Agenda 42. There it is. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Special Event Licensing and Temporary Land Use Agreement with Life is Beautiful LLC for the temporary use of land and the right-of-way for Life is Beautiful Festival, beheld in downtown Las Vegas in an area generally bound by Carson Avenue on the south, 11th Street on the east, Las Vegas Boulevard on the west, and the Las Vegas Expressway 515 on the north. Dates of September 25th through the 27th, 2015, Wards 3 and 5, Councilman Coffin and Barlow. So, Lou.
Mayor Goodman and council. For the record, Ted Olivas, Chief of Staff. The agreement before you today is for the Life is Beautiful Festival, as you just read. As you know, this would be the third year for having this festival downtown. The agreement is essentially the same as we had last year. It defines the temporary use of the land as well as the right-of-way for the festival, which would be held September 25th through the 27th in Wards 3 and 5 downtown. It licenses the use of that site for 18 days, and that includes nine days of site prep, three days for the actual festival, and six days of site restoration. Included in the agenda backup is some statistics that I provided to you before that talks about last year's event. And this information was based on a study by R&amp;R Research. Based on that study, the total estimated expenditure from out-of-town attendees, okay, not people from the Las Vegas Valley, out of town, is just over $20 million. And that breaks down into non-gaming, just over $16 million, and gaming, just over $4 million. The total estimated unique attendees is 37,700, or just under 40,000, and the total estimated event attendance over the three days is a little over 87,000 attendees. Now, as you know, if this agreement is approved today, our staff and the other jurisdictions that are involved in this process, because it's not just a city thing, it's Metro and NHP and a lot of different folks, will continue to work with the festival organizers to finalize the special events permit. We've been working with them for months now, getting things prepared for this moment and moving forward prior to the festival. So, Madam Mayor, if I may, we have a short presentation from representatives from the Life is Beautiful that will go over some of the event and what they're planning on doing, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Please proceed. Hi, guys. And ladies.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Council.
You need to, oh, there it's on. Okay.
Like you said, our dates are September 25th.
Start, announce yourselves and what your role is, please.
Ryan Dougherty, partner in the festival.
Okay.
Hi there, Justin Winiger, also a partner in the festival.
Eve Cohen, Managing Director of the festival.
And John Curran, RGG.
Okay, please go ahead.
We moved the festival up a month this year, so like you said, it's September 25th through the 27th. Excited to be back downtown for year three. There's a lot of buzz around the city about the upcoming event. Still focused on our four pillars. It's more than just a music festival. It's music, art, learning, and culinary. We have, it's a breakdown right here. Similar to last year and the year before, 70 bands spread out over four stages. More than just bands, DJs, acts. We have some great local chefs. They're elevating our food program once again. If you've been there before, you know it's more than just pizza and hot dogs. We have incredible chefs from around the city that are helping us feed all these people. We have artists that are flying in from all over the world, Portugal, Italy, Germany, to help us put up these massive wall installations, and we have tons of local artists pitching in as well. And then the educational program, still over three days, 25-plus speakers doing inspirational talks, everyone from Bill Nye the Science Guy to Coach Carter. Again, attendance for this year is slated for 100,000-plus people coming through for the three days. This is the full lineup. I won't go through everybody, but some exciting musicians coming in this year. Some that are of note, Stevie Wonder's only headlining appearance for all of 2015 at a festival is going to take place downtown. Hometown Heroes, the Imagine Dragons are back again. Brandon Flowers from the Killers, also in Hometown Heroes, performing, as well as the only festival appearance in the U.S. for Duran Duran. There's tons of other people. All great stuff. We've had some incredible press this year. This is our best year for sort of being nationally recognized as a festival. We've had 400 million media impressions so far since we started our campaigns. We have awareness campaigns really focused in the Southwest to bring even more people to town. We have 100 billboards in L.A. right now. So, we've really taken over Arizona, Southern California, especially Los Angeles, San Francisco, hoping to attract more people to downtown Las Vegas. We've reached out to the community in lots of different ways, mailers, emails, had meetings. We have upcoming correspondences from now until the festival. This is the festival footprint, very similar to the last two years. Not much has changed in terms of stage placements, but we do have some alternate stage directions. Everything's pretty much the same as the last two years. And what else? That's it.
Fremont Street needs to take out an E. Forever in education, sorry. Fremont Street, but it looks great this This is so exciting. I can't believe that you have.
You catch. You catch. Take that slide off now.
And, of course, beautiful people you've gone ahead and photographed.
Mayor, I think you guys, the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority thanks you for what you're doing. Mr. Olivas, your numbers and statistics from R&amp;R, I was listening to in the back just briefly, were there any estimates for attendees this year? Did you hit on that number, or do you guys know off the top of your head, of course, through the mayor?
I think it was mentioned that they're shooting for a hundred thousand.
Yeah, we're trending for a hundred-plus thousand a little bit.
You were ninety last year, right?
Correct.
Or the year before? Last year.
Well, because if you've taken out, Mayor, if they've taken out so many billboards in L.A. and in the southwest, I mean, goodness sakes, we're going to be packed. The downtown properties just must be in love with you guys for what you're doing.
We hope so.
I think, you know, certainly we, as a council, really are grateful for that economic impact. Listening to those numbers from Mr. Olivas and R&amp;R, R&amp;R did, I mean, are phenomenal to the economy alone. So, I'm really looking forward to this. Those are great headliners, and I could see the grins on your faces as you were reading them off, and man, this is going to be a fabulous, fabulous event, so looking forward to it. Thank you.
How about some billboards in either Denver or Phoenix?
We have awareness campaigns going on in Phoenix, mostly social and, you know, email-based, and then Denver, it's the same thing. So, the billboards are expensive. It's a lot more affordable for us to do, you know, online campaigns.
Okay. Anything down in San Diego area?
Same thing, awareness campaigns, yeah.
Good. Good. And council one, please.
I just wanted first to say thank you for being so quick and so personal in meeting with representatives of some of the churches that had called me. Particularly, I know the Catholic Church had some problems there, and some other churches who had called me. Your representatives came, met with me quickly, and met with them personally, and I haven't heard any more need from them or from their parishioners, so I'm assuming everything's going fine there. But I wanted to thank you for that professional way, how you quickly and efficiently handled that problem. And secondly, I wanted to thank you for my grandchildren, who absolutely adore that Life is Beautiful, and just come and tell me all kinds of wonderful times they've had there.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Yes, I see down here.
I was just curious. I saw the, backed into the demographic of the percentage over forty-five of your attendees. Are you concerned that you're going to blow that with Stevie Wonder and Duran Duran?
Yes. We want, the festival's for everybody, so we hope we do blow it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I've entertained a motion. Well, councilman, let's see, this is Coffin and Barlow. So, how about Councilman Coffin?
If there's no further testimony or requests from the audience to testify, then I certainly will be happy to move for approval, but it looks like someone is approaching.
This wasn't public hearing.
It's what? I'm sorry.
It's not a public hearing item, I'm sorry.
City attorney's trying to give me some advice. Would you say that loudly?
I'm indicating it's not a public hearing.
Thank you.
Oh, it is not a public hearing.
No, it's not.
Thank you very much. I move for approval.
Thank you, I'm sorry. There's a motion to approve on agenda item forty-two.
See you in court.
And if you please, vote and post. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Oh, my goodness. Nothing but, anything wonderful. Keep going. We're looking forward to it. Now, agenda item forty-three, is this live? One, yes. Discussion for possible action regarding a two-year agreement between the City of Las Vegas and Anson Inc. to implement Anson tutoring program at specified safety sites, three-hundred thousand dollars general fund, wards one, three, and five, Councilwoman Tarkanian, Councilman Barlow, and Coffin, and Mr. Harson, or Dr. Morris, Hibler, you're back.
Yes. Good morning, Mayor, members of the City Council. Lisa Morris Hibler, Deputy Director, Office of Community Services. At this time, I'd like to ask that agenda items forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six be heard together as they are all related.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead then and read forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six. Agenda item forty-four, discussion for possible action regarding a two-year agreement between the City of Las Vegas and communities and schools in Nevada to provide wraparound services and link at-risk students' community resources, two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars general fund, again wards one, at this time wards one and five, Tarkanian and Barlow. And agenda item forty-five, discussion for possible action regarding a two-year agreement between the City of Las Vegas and Public Education Foundation to support the literacy liftoff program, a summer bridge and after-school intervention program, two-hundred-thousand dollars general fund. That's back towards one, three, and five, Councilwoman Tarkanian, Councilman Barlow and Coffin. And then agenda item forty-six, discussion for possible action regarding an agreement between the City of Las Vegas. Teach for America to continue to implement a teacher development program that aligns quality teaching with the program downtown achieves, excuse me, sixty-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars general fund, again wards one, three, and five, Councilwoman Tarkanian, Councilman Coffin, and Barlow, and is there a typo?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. On agenda item forty-four, the wraparound, is that not include ward three? All the rest include ward one, three, and five. This one just says one and five.
No, that is, that is correct. It is ward one and five on that one.
Not ward three?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, please, if you would, with your report, and then we'll move forward.
All right. Thank you. And before I discuss the agreements being considered for approval, I'd like to provide information on the state of education in Las Vegas, along with an update on the Innovations in Education Strategic Planning Committee and the City of Las Vegas Education Endeavors. The school district had approximately three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-nine students enrolled last year, and they remain the fifth-largest district in the nation. It's estimated that we have approximately a hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand of those students that would be City of Las Vegas residents, and that is about thirty-eight percent. And the district has about forty-four percent of their student population is Hispanic, although in the city, it's about forty-eight percent. And so, what we are seeing is a majority of the students attending Clark County School District are now minority. Nevada has experienced some challenges throughout the education system, one being Clark County has about a hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand children ages zero to five, with over a hundred-thousand of those children living in households where all parents work. And currently, there are about thirty-two-thousand-nine-hundred licensed childcare slots, including about fifty-nine-hundred pre-K slots. So, research shows us that high-quality pre-K yields both short- and long-term benefits for children in their communities. It's not just a benefit to disadvantaged children, but it prepares all children for the rigors of education. Our K-12 system has experienced some challenges related to growth and poverty, teacher shortages, and budget constraints. And then in the higher registration system, we're seeing more remedial classes being developed for students who are not college-ready. And as recently as July twenty-first, there was a report by ACT that indicated only eight percent of Nevada's high school juniors are college-ready. Now, I'm not a doom-and-gloom kind of person, so what that's telling us is that we've got some work to do. We commissioned a report by Applied Analysis to develop a school statistics report to provide analysis on school performance in the City of Las Vegas, along with district-wide and jurisdictional comparisons. Since Clark County School District is regional, this information can contain some data outside of the city boundaries. However, the overall report is a reliable assessment at the ZIP code level. So, seventy-four percent of the Las Vegas elementary schools are three-star and below. Thirty of the one-hundred-and-forty-three Las Vegas schools are four-star, four or five-star, and we have four schools that are one-star, two of which are high schools that are alternative schools, so that means those are students who already had some challenges, maybe they had behavioral issues, those sorts of things. And then we have two elementary schools. One is Cambiero in Ward Three, the other is Matt Kelly. Cambiero is a Zoom school, and Matt Kelly is now both victory and turnaround.
Could I ask, if one is the top rating and five is the lowest rating, or vice versa?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. So, a one-star is the lowest rating, and your five-star are your top-rating schools.
And those dots represented a school in each of our wards, and the different colors tell us whether they're rated. Thank you.
And so, based on some of the briefings, this is just the preliminary information. We're going to be breaking this report down further, getting at the ward level, so we'll also be breaking the information down, the dots down, with school names and the actual school performance rating per ward. If you aggregate that information, what it tells us is that, on average, the city is a three-star, if you average all those out. Our graduation rates are averaged about sixty-three percent compared to Henderson at eighty-point-four percent, and then North Las Vegas, which has the lowest rate of fifty-one-point-three percent. The district averages around seventy, seventy-one percent graduation rates. Las Vegas has one of the highest percentages of English-language learners in our jurisdiction compared to other jurisdictions, which averages about fifteen-point-three percent, and some of our ZIP codes have almost fifty percent identified English-language learners. And again, I'm pointing this information out just because these are additional factors that in schools they have to consider because they need more resources in those schools. Free and reduced lunch rates in the City of Las Vegas, fifty-eight percent of the students qualify, and although some of the targeted schools that we work in have a hundred percent free and reduced lunch rates. And you can see it notated in the darker colors, that means that we have more than seventy-five percent free and reduced lunch rates in those ZIP codes. So, the City of Las Vegas Education and Endeavors. Education has been a key priority for the City of Las Vegas, really beginning to, around two thousand and eleven, when the City Council adopted the scorecard, which included education attainment goals related to third-grade literacy and high-school graduation rates. And initially, the city was influencing education through program enhancements and offerings such as SafeKey and Batteries Included. In SafeKey, we had our Apple Core Literacy Program, in which we had, last year, our children read over a million minutes in out-of-school time. And then also, a partnership with Three Square, which allowed forty-six of our SafeKey sites to be provided a full meal instead of just a snack. Now, one of the things that was amazing about that is not only did it save the city over two-hundred-thousand dollars annually, but it also converted, as I said, what the children were eating into a healthier meal. Initially, in our pilot year, we served sixty-seven-thousand meals, and then the subsequent two years, it was over a hundred-thousand meals served. And so, not only was that addressing childhood obesity, but also childhood hunger. So, we're really excited about that partnership with Three Square.
And excuse me, that's Three Square providing those meals?
Yes.
In all incidences?
In all incidences in the forty-six schools where there is at least fifty percent free or reduced lunch.
Thank you.
Yes. In our Batteries Included program, we've had two-hundred-and-twenty-five of the participants graduate and stay on track to graduate, and we're excited about that. And the city continues to demonstrate a commitment to establishing a robust education system, from preschool to post-secondary, which often is considered a P-20 education, with our newest projects related to social impact bonds, which you approved this morning, around pre-K and having access to high-quality early learning. And there's also our CSN Learning Center at City Hall, which is undergoing a redesign so that we can offer more certificate and credit programs right here in City Hall. Following your strategic planning session in two thousand and fourteen, on January thirty-first, the Innovations in Education Committee held its first meeting, and we have thirty-six-member panels, a committee with representatives from teachers, some of which were here today, principals. We have Public Education Foundation, CSN, and a host of others, UNLV, all coming together around improving the achievement gap for children living in poverty. And we have four subcommittees. The Teacher Pipeline Subcommittee, which is headed by Dottie Smith with the new teacher project, really engaging people around what do we need to do to retain and recruit teachers in our community? And how do we keep the ones that we have? Why do we have people in our community that used to be teachers that are no longer teaching? What do we need to do? Just this morning, we were hearing that there's still a thousand teachers short, and in our urban core, those numbers tend to be higher. We tend to have more subs in those schools, so...
And I would like to interject here something, because this discussion is so hot with what goes on at the legislature, the pre-planning that needs to go to look to the future. As more hotels come online and more people move here, many of them are going to be blue-collar. Many of them are going to really impact our education in our core of our city. We need to really be looking ahead aggressively with the funding of these specific programs that are working, so we know that, for instance, with the Genting property, if that goes, the formula for the city for years has been for every room you build, you can assume five more people are moving in. Well, if there are five thousand rooms there, obviously, it's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people that are going to be coming in, the impact, and so we don't get caught like the district, short a thousand or whatever it's going to be. So, as you're planning and looking ahead for this, that we really know that certainly the lesser-paying jobs are going to continue to move into the downtown area and are going to need more service, not less service. So, always aggressively, please, be planning to an outside number of what we have to be doing, the number of tutors we're going to need, et cetera, and how it spills over financially. Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I think it's so critical that we're planning ahead and do this in a timely fashion, so we're not up against the deadline of the schools.
All right. Thank you. The next Subcommittee is on family stability, which, again, in our areas where we have high poverty, transancy is a real issue. And today, this morning, we were talking about chronic absenteeism, but kids that move from school to school to school can be as high as fifty percent in some of our urban core schools. So, in particular, Hollingsworth is one of them, Councilman Coffin, where we have fifty percent transancy rate also in some of the schools, and Councilman Barlow's area as well. So, Terry Janison is heading that Subcommittee up, and they're looking at ways that we can wraparound services. The, you know, we believe that we really don't need any new programs. We need to help people connect to the programs that are there. We need to do a better way of outreach to people. And sometimes the way we do it, and we think everybody's connected with all this, phones and all that, but there's people out there that just really need help and don't know where to get it, and so we're really working on that one. Education Policy and Accountability, headed by Seth Brough, who's in the audience today, with Nevada Succeeds, really extremely important, because most of you know that this session was really the education session, and there were bills flying, and they were coming so quickly, and they were changing. It was, you know, difficult to keep up, and Seth's group was really staying on top of that. But the reality of it is, now that we have all those bills passed, what does that mean for our community, and certainly, what does it mean for our city? And so, that committee's going to be looking at that. And then accountability, how do we hold everybody accountable for all those bills that were passed and what comes out of it? And then how do we prepare ourselves for two thousand and seventeen? Because there's some things that we might want to see done differently, and the only way we can do that is to be working now and to be ready for seventeen. So, we're glad to have Seth heading that up. He puts out a lot of that information anyway, so that's going to be great. And then lastly is our pre-K kindergarten readiness. That's headed up by Denise Tenada Ashby, who is over the Children's Advocacy Alliance. And again, we believe that a lot of what we need to do, especially at the elementary level and to prepare our children, starts with school kindergarten readiness and early childhood learning.
And apropos of that, which is on item forty, agenda item forty-five, that the funds would be, at some point, be augmented, so that you can pick up that extra week of education for the children in the summer before they go back to school, because you had mentioned the funds were not there.
Were not there this year.
To go ahead that one extra week, which is desperately needed after the success of the summer education program.
Right. And we're working, and we have Dr. Geis in our audience, and he'll come up towards the end, but we've been working with the district to see how we can leverage resources and have, you know, the best alignment we can, so that we can definitely have those summer programs.
And I also think that extending the school day is necessary, isn't it? Have you discussed that?
We have.
It's not just a school year, but...
Yeah, he may touch upon it when he comes up, because he has, the schools that he oversees, extension of the school day has... extension of the school day has occurred in some of those schools.
I know, and when I was on the school board, we did extend the school day, I think, one minute, cost millions of dollars, millions of dollars to do that. But there's got to be a better way that you can handle it. And it seems to me, like the KIPP program and others that have been successful, that they, in extending the day and the week and the months, these are things we need to look at also, particularly where we have some difficulty in family cohesiveness.
Right, thank you. And I'd just like to point out that, while we're not talking about the Zoom schools, that the Zoom schools do have an alternative calendar year that does extend the school day and extends the school year as well. Victory in Zoom is money that was allocated from the state.
Yeah, state allocation, which could go for extending the school day and Zoom, just in the Zoom ones. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So, just quickly, going back to your Strategic Planning Committee, just wanted to say, like, the vision is to really, that we really believe that, and we said ambitious goal, but by 2020, that the Las Vegas schools in those impact zones will be national models. And that is why we're working together. Dr. Barton talked about that collective impact, and it's all of us working together with the same vision, the same mission, aligning our resources and really trying to make this happen. But really looking at, you know, how do we systematically recruit, develop, and retain the excellent teachers that are culturally responsive? Making sure that we have pre-K, that's critically important. Keeping the kids on track to graduate, reducing the number of kids that are credit deficient. And then, making sure that students and families have access to the resources necessary for, not only the academics, but the social and emotional success. And those are things that, as you well know, in some of our urban core schools, that tends to be interference to learning. And so, it's one of the reasons why we really put a lot of emphasis on that.
And if I could just add, that too often, the top administrators, the ones that the teachers go to, middle-level administrators, top administrators, the ones they go to to get help when there's a problem, and they need it. And they're right there in the gut level in the classroom, they know what's needed, they're good teachers. It's not responded to by the administrators. Something's wrong in that situation. And that's why a lot of people in the school district now, who are really good, are leaving. And it's not because they need to retire. They're leaving, and I've talked with them, and that's the problem. The bureaucracy has to be changed also.
So, there are 16 schools within the impact zones, and that represents our two collective impact models, Downtown Achieves and the Las Vegas My Brothers Keeper. And both of those support all the work that we've been doing. So Downtown Achieves was our first and is our first collective impact model that we had. It's backed by the city of Las Vegas. And, you know, it really created a platform for the dialogue to happen around education. You know, when we, sometimes when we see the statistics, people are like, oh, you know, and it's just the negative, but really, it's an opportunity for everybody to get engaged. And we've seen the business sector come to the table. We've seen the faith initiative, the faith sector come to the table. We know people want to know how they can help, and so, a lot of this collective impact model has really made that possible. We've also inspired greater engagement around the students and the parents. Sometimes, you hear people say, "Parents aren't engaged." And what we hear from parents is, "We don't know how to be engaged," or, "The way you're trying to engage me, I'm not interested." Doesn't mean I'm not engaged, it means I'm not interested in how you want to engage me. So, really breaking that down. And then, conducting the research to determine the baseline and status of the academic achievement and the community involvement. And Doctors Joe Morgan and Tara Rains did have to leave for another meeting, but they've been instrumental in conducting the needs assessment. So, we're not guessing and shooting from the hip. We're actually getting their own words and then understanding what their needs are. From the first round of the needs assessment data in Downtown Achieves, what we heard back from the community and educators and families are, we need more access to technology. We need more literacy resources, tutoring opportunities, after-school programs, greater parental involvement, and then access to medical and mental health care. And so, we've been doing a lot of that work, and the contracts that you have before you speak to that. And then, there's a lot of other resources we don't pay for, that we just leverage by going out and talking to people about the needs and showing them that, and they just come to the table. And so, again, as I said, we're not trying to necessarily create new programs, we're trying to really connect people with the programs that exist.
And if I just might add, I just think it's wonderful, Lisa, the openness you've shown, you know, when we brought the technology people to come and talk to you, when we went into coding. For example, I know what I've been focusing on this year in Board One has been that, well, I started last year, but to the focus there on the high school level and on the preschool level, these are things, for example, the preschool level, that you're trying out, never before tried out, and this level in technology with the students, and you were very open to that, and you do that research so well, and you know what you're talking about. I just wanted to let you know the appreciation we feel towards that. And I think what's going to happen, we're going to have pre-, post-testing, and we'll know if we were able to do it with children at that level and how much we were able to get done. Because not enough coding is done in the schools. It's not a coding-type thing, and coding is what gets you jobs.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman, you're absolutely correct. And there were several STEM camps that we ran this summer, and the kids just eat that up. I mean, they're remarkable, and all these kids can work a lot of this technology better than we can, so we certainly know that they have it in them. On the My Brothers Keeper, this is our second collective impact model. The city of Las Vegas is the backbone of that one as well, and Nevada Partners serves as the convener. They've been bringing a lot of community organizations together to support the schools in that area. And it has a, it's part of the national initiative, but it focuses on proving the lives for youth of color with an emphasis on African-American boys. And one might say, "Well, how did you come to that?" And a part of it was twofold. One, in looking at Superintendent Skorkowski's pledge of achievement, disproportionality was one of the areas that needed to be focused on. Two, African-American boys have the lowest graduation rates in our community. So, much like what's going on across the country, we too, we're also dealing with that issue. It centers on five schools and the surrounding community, so we're really working on stabilizing community conditions. Now, one of the interesting things about My Brothers Keeper is in the West Las Vegas area, but what we noticed about, and there was discussion about this today, when you guys were talking about some of the RDA and some of that discussion. But when we look at the family stability, the student transancy rate ranges from 30% to 60% in that area, and the median income is 18,000 to 38,000. But when you factor in the percentage of households that are raised single-headed household, that number is 43%, and then, the median income drops down to $12,000. So, we have a large percentage of families that are operating on very low incomes. And really, that hasn't changed much through the years. So, we do know that job creation is critically important in order for our families to truly have stability. So, that is factored into My Brothers Keepers. We held a summit in November 10th, and the mayor had signed on to the challenge that came out of the White House. We have three goals, that children will be ready for kindergarten and read at grade level by third grade. Obviously, we've talked a lot about that. Students will graduate from high school ready for college and career. And the one thing that we have in this one is that we will eliminate the school-to-prison pipeline. And essentially, what that's saying is that there's a disproportionate number of African-American youth that tend to be suspended and expelled and end up dropping out of school, and sometimes they are finding ways into the juvenile justice system and then on to the penitentiary. And we've talked that in Las Vegas, we have 12% of our youth are African-American, but in the juvenile justice system, they're represented 34%. So, they're significantly overrepresented. One of the nice things of the work that we've been doing with the superintendent and Jack Martin at the county, who's the director of Juvenile Justice Services and Nevada Partners and Metro and others, is that we are extremely close, through a partnership we have with the National League of Cities, to creating a juvenile assessment center here in Las Vegas. And this would be a way for youth to be diverted from our juvenile justice system and to be given wraparound services for them and their families. So, again, we're looking at ways to keep kids in school, keep kids learning, because having kids in the juvenile justice system or doing anything other than becoming productive adults goes against what we believe is what's in the best interest for the city. These next few slides show how our targeted schools are performing compared to district average and illustrates why we have strategically been providing services and supports to the schools, the students, and their families. And this work aligns with other school district programs, such as the Turnaround Victory Schools and Zoom Schools, which have been implemented to improve academic outcomes for students. So, as you see here, this is the testing, and this is for 2013, 2014. As you may know, last year's testing was not complete, so we have, this is the last full year of testing we have. But in reading, most of our schools are below the school district average, and that's why we're working in those schools on reading. Crestwood had a lot of programs and services that, over the last couple of years, and so, they've seen an increase in their scores. They're still a three-star school. But Kelly, which is our one-star school, and Fitzgerald and My Brothers Keeper are the one-star school, those schools have been struggling along with some of the others in there. And math proficiency, again, you see Crestwood and Park were doing better than the school district average, but all the other schools were below the school district average.
Your Honor, may I interrupt?
Yes, please.
I just want to give a shout-out to one of my alma maters, Park. It's obvious that the excellence in teaching and students that attend there has continued long since I left. Thank you very much.
No problem, Councilwoman. In writing, we see that all of our schools are struggling, and Park, and this particular slide is right at the bottom, next to Matt Kelly. But nonetheless, you know, those are things that we look at so that we can make...
Park fell off.
Wait, just a minute, just a minute. There's a mistake in the mathematical calculation. It's obviously that some new arrival has distorted the numbers.
Oh, but the thing of it is, is that we're using data to make informed decisions, and so that's important. So, I'm going to move into the contracts at this point and just give a little overview of the work that was done over the past two years in working with these groups and where we're headed. So, our first one is ANSON. We brought ANSON on to work in our SafeKey sites that had the lowest numbers. We had low participation, and usually, the low participation stemmed from a couple of things, that maybe the parents did not value what SafeKey had, or it was, the cost oftentimes was a barrier. But what we did know is that in these schools, that there was, the students were underperforming and could really use the tutoring. So, we met with all the principals and said, "What would you need? What do your students need after school?" Over and over again, tutoring came up at the top, they need tutoring. But they also talked to us that they needed that social aspect, too, that these kids didn't get to participate a lot of time in sports and recreational activities. So, we came up with a way that we could integrate tutoring into a SafeKey program and allow kids to be selected by the principals based on need to come into the SafeKey program. And so, that is what we've been doing with ANSON. And we piloted at, originally at Sunrise Acres, they had to leave, but they wanted to just tell you what a difference it had made in their school. And at the time, Sunrise Acres had about five to seven students. And now, they have 45 students and a waiting list. And actually, Dr. Geis, who was there from the very beginning, saw that growth. And we knew they needed it, we just needed to figure out how we could get it to them and what we need to say. And some of it was marketing and communicating, making sure our information was in Spanish and English, and making sure that it was simplified so that parents understood what they were getting, why they'd get it. But I think, more importantly, we actually made it a positive. We said, "Hey, congratulations, your child has been selected for this wonderful SafeKey Zone program. Come down and find more, find out more about it." We didn't say, "Oh, you know, sorry, you know, your child is at the bottom of the list," because we really want to build children up, we're not trying to tear them down. So, we were very excited about the results from the Ames Web Test that we have with ANSON. And just so you know, all of these contracts that we have before you will be independently evaluated, as I said, by Doctors Joe and Morgan.
And could I ask one more, another question? Is that Richard Bryan Elementary School that you have there? And this is a, is that Richard Bryan that's near Summerlin?
Yes.
In Summerlin?
Yes, in the Summerlin sites, their tutoring was offered for paid tutoring, but again, at the request of the parents. So, Staten was another one, where the parents asked.
But that school isn't low-performing, is it?
No, those schools...
And Staten was another one?
Was another one, yeah.
Okay, because I was beat, I, yeah.
Yeah, Staten and Bryan were schools where the parents asked us, could they have paid tutoring? And we said, "Okay, we'll see if we can bring that to your..."
Well, that's wonderful. It's good that they did it.
And if you recall, we've had, the city's been doing a lot of survey of our constituents to find out what they want. And where there was Office of Community Services, Parks and Rec, consistently, what we're hearing is, we want more academic services to be built into programming, so...
I just wondered, though, is that reflected on your chart? I mean, are Bryan and Staten in the chart? Because if they are, wouldn't it raise it, oh, they're not? Okay, good, that's good, thank you.
Your Honor, may I?
Yes, please.
I would like to thank my colleague for raising the issue, because it's important for those people to understand the income and the other demographics of the community. You see the situation from west to east is income, and it's lovely that you can live in an area or have a public school in an area where the parents not only are probably living off a single-parent income, but also they have sufficient expendable income to pay more for those students. So, that's the rub, I guess, all through public education, is how can we provide the equal opportunity? You will never, and I would never, ever suggest we stop parental involvement, but there are some that just can't afford to help. And that, what creates a bad atmosphere. And our school district's doing the very best it can with the money it has. And the parents, they don't have any extra money to lobby for something that they could pay for, they just can't afford to pay for it. So, there will always be the edge, it always follows money. And I guess, if the city could do anything, it could help level the playing field in the basics, not in the frills, but in the basics. And I see that every year at the 13 elementary schools that I visit. Thank you very much.
So, over the next two years, we're proposing to have ANSON come into Booker, Crestwood, Fife, Hollingsworth, JT McWilliams, Kelly, Park, Sunrise Acres, Vegas Verde's, and West Prep. And again, we work collaboratively with those principals at that school in helping to identify the students with the greatest needs.
It's a fabulous program and really a necessity. You can't do it without it, without the tutoring campaign.
Our next agreement is with communities and schools. And as I stated, oftentimes, the children have issues that go beyond just the academics. And if you, if you come to school hungry, or, you know, you're dirty, or your clothes are torn and ripped, some of our schools in the urban core have full laundry centers. And so, what we were talking with the communities and schools, how can we take that pressure off of the, off the teachers so that they can teach? And then, we have somebody else that can help with some of these other issues. And so, communities and schools has a national track record of working with students and providing those sorts of wraparound services. And that also oftentimes reduces behavior attendance, because a lot of times, the behavior is based on things that are going on in the home. It's not that kids just want to come to school and be disruptive, but there's all other types of factors. And they have the time to get to that root cause, whereas we don't want our teachers spending a lot of time on that, we'd rather them spend time teaching. So, they were in Rexville, and this year, we are, would like to expand them to Vegas Verde's, Matt Kelly, and Fitzgerald, and then also retain Rexville. Again, continuing to provide wraparound services. They also do some one-on-one and case-managed students as well. Literacy Liftoff is actually homegrown. It's something that we asked the Public Education Foundation to develop on our behalf. We knew that we needed some sort of a literacy program for students that were pre-K and first grade, through first grade, but weren't really sure how to do it. And I believe it was the councilwoman at first suggested we go talk to the Public Education Foundation. And we acknowledge that we don't always have all the answers, while we have so many partners at the table. But this is a great program, it's a bridge program, and not only does it work with the children, but it also works with the parents. So, it teaches the parent how to engage with the child, both in a home setting, how to read to the children, and, you know, really understand how the child is performing. But they also get really good results out of that. And they were actually fortunate enough to leverage the initial program and receive, I believe it was a million dollars, that they used not only for literacy liftoff to other city sites, but also for other parent engagement programs. And so, this year, we were asking that we be able to expand literacy liftoff into another... And so this year, we were asking that we be able to expand literacy liftoff into another six sites. And so, to continue that, which is really important. So we'd be at Rex Bell, Matt Kelly, Crestwood, Cully, West Prep Elementary, Wendell P. Williams, and Fitzgerald. And one of the goals is for them to provide 5,000 home books, so they create home libraries for children, which is a really good thing. And lastly, but certainly very, very important, is our partnership with Teach for America. As I indicated before, we have, you know, teaching, teacher shortage is continuously a problem here, and Teach for America helps the district by going out and recruiting people to come here. The, the, earlier, the recruitment department was saying how when they go out and recruit people, just walk by Las Vegas. Apparently, we have an image problem out there. But this is just another way that we can get teachers. TFA does a great job of bringing in those core members, and then they place them in our highest-need schools. So this contract would allow them to do that and continue that work in the My Brothers Keeper and Downtown Achieve schools, where we'd like to place at least 25 teachers per year, and they always exceed that, that number. Again, research and evaluation, everything that we do is independently evaluated. And then also, the research is a great thing, because it helps us to make informed decisions. And we will provide a report to you guys. Lastly, I'll just say, I just wanted to read a little quote from the National League of Cities. It said, "Strong cities are built on a foundation of strong families and empowered neighborhoods that support every child. The steps we take to strengthen families and improve outcomes for children and youth are among the most important investments we make in the health and economic vitality of our communities." So I just wanted to thank you for your leadership in making education a priority for the city of Las Vegas. And I just wanted to clarify, just for the record, that approval of these agreements will budget, well, funding of $401,250 for fiscal year 2015 and 16, and 2016, 17. With me today to answer any questions you have is Anthony McTarget of Anson Foundation, Sherry Ward, Communities and Schools, David Bloggett, and Dr. Beverly Mathis of the Public Education Foundation, Adam Johnson, Teach for America, and then Dr. Jeff Geis from the Clark County School District. Thank you.
Phenomenal, phenomenal report. And all of you who stand with the city for our children, God bless each one of you for what you're doing. We will continue on this, and I don't know if council has questions here that they would like on any of these particular items.
I ask, don't mind.
Dr. Hibler, and to your entire team, and all of the collaborative organizations and agencies that partner to pull all this information together. And I know, working through the National League of Cities, we have been very integral in the piece, or the component, I should say, as it relates to the school-to-prison pipeline and the juvenile justice reform. And so with that, I ask that you please continue to keep us updated in making sure that we all have a seat at the table in regards to how we turn these numbers around. I find it, you know, unfortunate that a lot of the schools that are, that you've listed here today are not where they should be, or could be. And I truly believe that we have enough brilliant minds around the table to help turn these schools around and get them up to the top tier. Because as a native of this community, I get somewhat frustrated when I travel and people ask me where I'm from, and I tell them where I'm from, and the first thing that comes out of their mouth is, "What's going on with you all's education system? Why is it so low?" And I would like to have that conversation turned around, and through your leadership and your entire team, and everyone who has their boots on the ground to make a difference from every aspect, I believe we can most definitely do that collectively. So, thank you all for your assistance.
Thank you. And as we look to the future, my plea is always going to be, when we deal with inner-city schools, that we offer faculty better salaries than anywhere else in this community and state. We increase salaries to come in and teach, have the best teachers in every classroom in the core cities, and that we afford more per-pupil expenditure in the inner-city schools. Until the whole state can do that, we are not going to succeed. So it's getting the best teachers to come down here, a great teacher, they would love to have 20 in a classroom, but a great teacher can handle 30 in a closet and have an inspiring educational opportunity. It's about paying for the best, attracting and retaining the best faculty. So you're going to hear that from me as long as I'm alive, and that we increase, and if in fact, there's a way that we can start a foundation to augment faculty salaries in the core schools that you're about, and also per-pupil allocation of funding, I want to move that forward. That's the way you're going to really make a change. We're doing everything we possibly can, you're making it happen, what each one of you are doing. But the answer is the same, and there's nothing going to change. We can do that. So whether it's going to be creating a new foundation with the enthusiasm of city council, how we're going to go about it, but I have always known from way back in the '70s, before when we were even at the point that Clark County School District was number two in the country, that it all happens because of the teacher. And you've got to attract and retain, you've got to pay, and we are very low on that totem pole. We've got a great governor now, who's done a great deal to find funds to do things. It's not going to the teachers yet, and it's not going to per-pupil expenditure. So our city needs to move forward in that agenda. And at this point, I'm going to thank you again, all of you, we're excited about what you're doing, it is making a difference. And for each child that's been touched and helped through all of the different programs of what you're doing, God bless you. And with that, I'm going, I've been advised by council that we can move these, all four, in one motion, unless somebody on council wants to pull something? And council is shaking its head, correct? So I'm going to turn to Councilwoman Tarkanian, please.
I move to approve-
You have to put on your-
Sorry. I move to approve items number 43, 44, 45, and 46, with gratitude from all the council for the fine work you're all doing to help children.
And that is your motion. So there's a motion been made on agendas 43, 44, 45, and 46. And please vote, and please post.
Thank you.
Now applaud.
Now applaud.
Wow. Keep going, we're going to get there. Thank you all so very much. We are going to go into, at this point, we are going into closed-door session, we thank you all, and we're sorry we had you wait so long today. But we welcome you back at all times, keep doing what you're doing, it's so valuable. Bless you all. And we are going to go into closed-door session, which, does that bring us back for one, on Agenda Item Number 87? So if council will not wander, go directly back for closed-door session. On number 87, take your cellphones or whatever you need, and then we will reconvene as soon as that is done. Hopefully, on Agenda Item 48 will be next. Thank you very much. So we are pulling forward Agenda Item 87. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
Is everybody here? Where is Councilwoman? Is him back? Where's Councilman Coffin?
I'm here.
There you are, okay. So these are Agenda Items 40 and 41. And so, let's move forward then on number 40, and this is City Attorney's Annual Performance Review. And so I'm just going to ask you to please go ahead, you'll do it succinctly. On Agenda Item 41-
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, should we probably start with Agenda Item 40?
Right, which is our Attorney's, City Attorney's Annual Performance Review and Recommendation.
Does any council member have a motion?
In fact, I'm going to make a motion for a 10% increase.
Okay.
To the base salary.
There's a motion on the floor to increase Mr. Jerbic's salary by 10%. Mr. Jerbic, do you just need to put some comments on the record?
I was just telling you publicly, but I told you privately, I've, biggest role in my life is working here and coming to work every day, and I look forward to continuing that for a long time.
And that you had, it was looking forward to the future, that you intend to be with us?
That's correct. And I also, I almost want to put on the record, because I know my staff is watching, I have the fortune to have Morgan sitting next to me right now, but for all those who are not here, every bit of success that this office has is due to them. And every time we look good is due to the people that, you know, give their work, whether they are typing criminal complaints, or whether they're in the courtroom, or whether behind the scenes some other way. I've got the best staff in the city, and I am very proud of it, and very glad to work with them.
Okay.
Very good.
So there's a motion, I've made a motion, and Councilwoman, I'm sure will be here and will want to give you an oral vote. So please, there's a motion, if you'll please vote, and please post. And in the interim, while this is happening, I just want to thank the full staff and your City Attorney's Office, it's absolutely leadership all the way, and we're just so grateful to you, Mr. Jerbic, in this now 23rd year with the city.
Twenty-three on Monday.
Twenty-three on Monday, we're not giving you the day off Monday. But anyway, just, and if you'll post it. Are you in hearing, Ray? Well, she could add on.
Let me go get her.
Okay, hold on one sec then. But anyway, it's just been a remarkable year, and you really do set the bar very, very, legitimately and figuratively, set the bar very high for anybody else in any other legal department across this country, and it's just wonderful to have you and be part of the city organization. You've got a great staff, so-
I wasn't hearing, Ray.
You were.
And I just wanted to say, thank you also for saying that I would vote positive, and I would want to record it.
Perfect, thank you. So if you will then take her off the waiting-for-the-vote list and put her in there.
So for the record, we're going to be voting for you, Councilwoman Tarkanian?
Yes.
And that is unanimous.
If I can make a comment, Mayor, after that.
Please, and we want to congratulate you. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Jerbic. I want to say this after our brief discussion in the back, Mr. Pennessys for your staff, highly complimentary towards everyone in your office, all the professional men and women that serve in your, in your department, both civil and criminal. He highlighted some areas that we often overlook, and I think it's, I think it's quite important that you're recognized for your leadership in regards to that fashion, so thank you.
And to add on to that as well, the volunteer efforts beyond their employment hours, what they each do for this community is beyond remarkable. The work and your leadership in this, and my only hope is that, what did we hear today? Something was extended to 2046. I asked Mayor Pro Tem, was he going to be here in 2046? He wasn't sure. I can assure you all, I will not be here. But my hope is Brad Jerbic, you and your staff will be here still in 2046.
Thank you, Mayor.
So congratulations, and you're hooked again. So thank you. And Mayor Pro Tem, let me ask you, if you would, for the clarification on Agenda Item 41, which is our city auditor, Rad Snelding, where are you? I've got the wrong glasses, is that-
Easy, Mayor.
There you are, over in the corner. If you would then try to collect that thought, how it's supposed to be said.
I will. It is discussion of possible action regarding the annual review of city auditor Radford Snelding, and we did have a closed-door session in the back to discuss those issues, and he presented his progress in all of the departments, which was very, very impressive, especially with the existing open audits that still exist. So the discussion was quite good in regards to-
Yes.
-to his accomplishments, and we're very grateful for that, Mr. Snelding, as well as your staff, who work with you on a regular basis. We did speak about the, he reports directly to us. We, as a city council, hire three people, city manager, the city attorney, and the city auditor. And I think that was started by your husband, Oscar Goodman, when he was mayor. And that says, says something about who we are as a city. It's his job and responsibility to audit departments.
And but what's interesting was, apparently, the, this particular position is the only one in the entire state that has an independent audit reporting to the elective body and not to management.
Very interesting.
So it's unique and really incredible, and we're just very, very grateful, and the accolades that you heard back there, but the city needs to know, just remarkable, and we're very grateful.
Okay, I would refer to Councilman Beers for any comments and perhaps a motion.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I was pretty impressed with the report, although I am concerned that the staff that he has is not large enough. There are some pretty important things on the yet-to-do list that could be done faster if we had a few more people. I think there's five or six professionals in the office right now, and a growing to-do list. So I would like to, I'm not sure if we can instruct staff, or how we get on the agenda, some sort, maybe it's just an internal report, that indicates the history of the staffing level of the department, and allow us to take a look at that historical staffing level vis-à-vis the general growth of the city and its general fund. But, but I, you know, I think based on our actions with the city attorney, I was thinking something comparable, we're apparently limited by an HR policy as to our ability to do that. And the best we could do today would be to raise him to the assigned top-of-range for the city auditor. And then perhaps re-have human resources revisit the range calculations, paying particular attention to the fact that unlike all the other cities within the state of Nevada, he reports directly to the city council. So if you're ready for a motion, I would move that we-
I would like that to be a motion, then.
We would move him to the top of the range that's currently defined by HR.
Can I clarify just one direct, the direction to staff? And that is to do an evaluation, number one, of staffing in the city auditor's office?
Yep.
Number two, evaluate that range in regards to other municipalities throughout the Southwest, I would imagine, that would be the thing. Very good, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, Orlando Sanchez. Last year, we did, in your budget, you approved one more position for the city auditor. We will meet with Rad and do a study to see how the past staffing levels, and we'll do exactly what you instructed today. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Yes, Councilwoman. I just wanted to add that I agree with Councilman Beers, and we should note that the salaries for those who work under us do not have to fit in with all the other steps, because these are different types of jobs, and these jobs carry more responsibility than the other types. And I'm mentioning this because there was a time when we had someone who worked half-time for us, who was absolutely excellent, and we lost that person because we couldn't even add, because we were saying, well, they, you can't add, because they couldn't add here or there. And that should not be considered for the people that we are selecting to work directly under us. I just wanted to point it out, Mr. Beers.
Thank you. So there is a motion at this point, and asking staff, regardless of the one position, at least to continue investigating or report back to council about staffing in the auditor's area, and to take Mr. Snelding to the top of what's currently reported as the top of the range. Is that correct? And then to get more feedback in on a comparable position that is not restricted.
Which looks to me like it would be, it looks to me like it's a 5% or 6% increase.
Right.
Roughly. You know, Your Honor, listening to Councilwoman Tarkanian, I wonder if the solution is to take the three direct hires by the council to something instead of a salary range, a already-defined term within our ordinances and policies, instead to take it to something like a recommended salary or something like that, so that we do have the flexibility that Councilwoman Tarkanian is describing.
So can we get some more information on that, certainly through HR and through them?
Sure, Mayor. For the record, Mark Vincent, CFO. We have rate ranges for everybody, starting with Betsy Down. We certainly can relook and take it, do a new study for the city auditor's rate range. Just also wanted to request if we could also have Councilman put on the record that this should be retroactive effective with July, the pay period starting July 5th, in order to treat them like all the other appointed managers.
Excellent, yes. Retroactive with that first pay period.
To July 5th.
Good point. So will you accept that addition?
You seeking a change to the motion? Yes, ma'am.
Please.
I would make that.
Thank you. All right, there's a motion. Please vote and please post.
No, please do that first. I've got 15 minutes. You're good.
Okay. And that is unanimous, and Rad Snelding. We just think the world of you and just appreciate everything that you've been doing, and the work that your staff has been doing is simply phenomenal. And there is much ahead to keep going on. So in your committee that works independently, also to thank them, please, on behalf of all of us. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Your Honor.
Yes, please.
If I may ask also, through you, to our clerk, that all the minutes from this particular segment be reflected in a verbatim fashion, so that future councils will understand that we have a change in philosophy occurring here at this point. The reasons, it'll, by going verbatim, it'll show essentially why we're doing it, and while we cannot bind future councils, you want future councils to know why we're taking a different approach. And I think just the remarks on the record would do it.
For Items 40 and 41?
And, yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Congratulations to both of you. Moving on, we are now currently on Agenda Item 88, I'm sorry, 48. Recommending Committee Bill Eligibles for Adoption at This Meeting. Bill Number 2015-40. Councilman Barlow, would you like this bill read into the record?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Mr. Jerbik.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2015 dash 40, in order to update LVMC Chapter 11.1010, related provisions pertaining to processing and disposition of parking violations, and to provide for related matters.
Move for approval. There is a motion, please vote. Councilman Barlow made the motion to approve.
He did.
Please post. Motion passes. Agenda Item 49, Bill Number 2015-45. Councilman Anthony, would you like this bill read into the record?
Sure.
Yes, you would.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Bill Number 2015 dash 45, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly described by land and be annexed, to make it inhabit the subject of laws obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for related matters.
You have a motion, Councilman Anthony?
Move for approval.
Please vote. Post when ready. Motion passes. Agenda Item 50, Bill Number 2015-46. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read into the record?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2015 dash 46, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly described by land and be annexed, to make it inhabit the subject of laws obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. Move for approval.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow. There's a motion for approval, please vote. And post. And motion passes. Bill, Agenda Item 51, Bill Number 2015-47. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read?
Mayor Protem, prior, yes, I would like to have the bill read, but in the process of the bill being read, Brad, if you will, through you, Mayor Protem, explain the differences, the differences between this proposed ordinance of what's being presented, so that it's clear to the public as to what's taking place at this point.
Correct. We have to do the best I can. I don't have the entire ordinance in front of you, but I worked on this and worked with individuals who work with the legislature in changing the law. State law and city laws both governed firearms at both the state level and the city level. These included things like CCWs, including where you could possess and not possess a firearm. This recent legislative session saw a sea change at the legislature, which essentially took away the city's ability to regulate firearms, their possession, and the like in various places. And so based on state law, we have had to rescind various portions of our city law that previously dealt with the regulation of firearms because of these changes. This bill is in conformance, I believe, with that state law. I've met with an individual in the industry, shared with him our draft, and I believe that this is mandatory as a result of action taken by the state legislature, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Did you read the bill yet, or is that it? Read the bill then, please.
The bill is turn Number 2015 dash 47, in order to repeal the code provisions pertaining to pistols and other weapons and to harm to state law, and to provide for other related matters. Move for approval.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow. Motion for approval, please vote. And post. Motion passes. We are on Agenda Item 52. Recommending Committee, that's the recommending committee, bill eligible for adoption at a later meeting. Items 52 through 58, bills Number 2015-43 and 20 dash 48 through 2015-3 will be heard at a later meeting. We will move on to new bills. Agenda Item 59, new bills. Items 59 through 73, Bills 2015 dash 54 through Bill 2015 dash 68 will be heard at the recommending committee on Monday, August 17, 2015. Item 74, Bill Number 2015-69, will not be heard recommending, but will be forwarded directly to full council at the September 2, 2015 city council meeting. New bills, 2015 dash 54 through 2015 dash 68 are assigned to council members, I believe, Councilman Barlow, Councilman Anthony? Correct? And Councilman Coffin? And we are moving on.
Councilman, I need you to read them in the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Jerbik, could you read them in the record, please?
On behalf of your Mayor Protem, Bill Number 2015 dash 54, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly described by land and be annexed, to make it inhabit the subject of laws obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for related matters. Bill Number 2015 dash 55, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly described by land and be annexed, to make it inhabit the subject of laws obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2015 dash 56, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly described by land and be annexed, to make it inhabit the subject of laws obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2015 dash 57, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly described by land and be annexed, to make it inhabit the subject of laws obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2015 dash 58, in ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly described by land and be annexed, to make it inhabit the subject of laws obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other matters. Bill Number 2015 dash 59, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly described by land and be annexed, to make it inhabit the subject of laws obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2015 dash 60, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly described by land and be annexed, to make it inhabit the subject of laws obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2015 dash 61, in ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly described by land and be annexed, to make it inhabit the subject of laws obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2015 dash 62, in ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly described by land and be annexed, to make it inhabit the subject of laws obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other matters. Bill Number 2015 dash 63, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly described by land and be annexed, to make it inhabit the subject of laws obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2015 dash 64, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly described by land and be annexed, to make it inhabit the subject of laws obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2015 dash 65, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly described by land and be annexed, to make it inhabit the subject of laws obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2015 dash 66, in order to amend the Unified Development Code, to revise the standards for allowing the sale of automobiles, trucks, and boats by means of a temporary commercial permit, and to provide for other related matters. Bill Number 2015 dash 67, in order to providing for the issuance of the city of Las Vegas with its general obligation, limited tax, medium-term recreational project bonds, Series 2015A, and they are supposed to amount not to exceed $26 million for the purposes of acquiring, constructing, and improving and equipping recreational projects, providing details concerning the bonds for the project, the project and general tax proceeds, and providing for other related matters. Bill Number 2015 dash 68, in ordinance of the city council, the city of Las Vegas, Nevada, authorizes the issuance of its city of Las Vegas, Nevada, general obligation, limited tax taxable, various purpose refunding bonds, and issued secured by pledged revenue, Series 2015B, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds, providing the form, terms, and conditions of the bonds, and securing therefore and other details in connection therewith, and providing for other matters relating thereto, and providing the effective date hereof. And finally, Bill Number 2015 dash 69, in order to update LVMC Chapter 11.68 pertaining to the city's pedestrian mall, and to provide for other related matters. And Mayor Protem, before you hit the button, if I could just remind everybody that this last bill, 2015 dash 69, also known as the Fremont Street Experience Pedestrian Mall Ordinance, is going to be heard for public hearing at the city council, the full city council, as recommending committee on September 2, 2015. But there will be a special opportunity to make your voice heard if you are a street performer or downtown entertainer, on Tuesday afternoon, August 15, at 1:30 in these city council chambers. Both myself and Todd Story, the executive director of the ACO Nevada, will be present to listen to any comments and to see if we can incorporate them into our current ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jerbik. Those two next, yes. Can you start over, because I missed that first, just kidding? Just kidding. Sorry, Mayor. The mayor is back. I'll read these and I'll let, turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, and then you see.
Yeah, it's been requested that we pull forward Agenda Items 84 and 85 to be heard next. Agenda Item 84 is an extension of time, 59761, on request of extension of time of an approved special use permit, SUP 20519, for a 12-story mixed-use development, including 58,000 square feet of commercial space and 1,100 residential condominium units. And I'm going to go ahead and read 85 in as well, Mr. Jerbik, as they're both related. Is that? Agenda Item 85, extension of time, 59762, on the request for approved site development plan review, SDR 20502, for a 12-story mixed-use development, including 58,000 square feet of commercial space and 1,100 residential condominium units. The applicant owner is 305 Las Vegas LLC on 2.67 acres at the southwest corner of Charleston Boulevard and Fourth Street, C1 Limited Commercial Zoning. Staff recommended denial on both items. These are in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. And I see the applicant is present, Mr. is present, Mr. Perrigo.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Longstein will be making the staff report on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Since the original approval eight years ago, no progress has been made with regards to the building and mixed-use development, as no plans have been submitted for review, nor have any building permits been issued. As this is the fourth request for an extension, staff is recommending denial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to make some comments, or shall we turn them over to Councilman Coffin?
I'd like to say a few things.
Please, go ahead.
First, I want to, I want to thank the council for their courtesy and time this week. I want to apologize to Councilman Anthony. I missed an appointment, but everybody else was.
Let me just stop you for a second.
Sure.
The clerk needs your name for the record, please.
Oh, Barnett, B-A-R-N-E-T, Liberman, L-I-B-E-R-M-A-N. Earlier, they had a very articulate and cogent presentation on the education institutions and the progress that's been made. And I will tell you that I have two daughters who are educators, dedicated, and one of the, the two most important issues for them deciding where they teach, other than it being a wonderful teaching atmosphere, which all the schools they've taught in have, is where are they going to live? Where are they going to be able to afford to live? And how are they going to get to their job from where they live? So I'm saying that as a, as a background for what we plan to achieve with the housing, rental housing projects that we propose. And that is to be able to afford, to offer people moving to Las Vegas the opportunity to rent a decent apartment downtown at a reasonable rent, so that they can pursue their careers here without having to buy a home. So there's a real barrier to entry for these teachers that you're trying to attract, which is they have to get together the funds, borrow money from their in-laws, you know, and make a commitment to buy a home, as well as make a decision to perhaps teach here. So with that as background, I will say that it is eight years. It's been an expensive eight years. It's been torturous for us financially. This is not something where we had options on the property. We have purchased the property outright, and we have not been able yet to finance, to get the debt finance necessary for the construction loan to proceed. We have another project, maybe 900 feet away on Casino and Coolidge, which we operate, it's a smaller project, and we are proceeding vigorously with that one, hope to be in the ground in February or March. And when that is, that only has 179 units, so two things will be accomplished when that is done or started. One, the absorption rate will be proven. And two, the process that we use to do this construction, which is a patented process I've developed, will have been proven. So there'll be less resistance for the financing, which is what we're finding now, the absorption rate and the fact that it's a new process is two of the barriers we have to the financing. So I beg your liege for yet another extension.
Okay. Any questions, comments from council before I turn it over to Councilman Coffin? Please, Councilman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Barnett, did you say beg your liege?
Yes.
My gosh. You don't have to say that.
[laughing]
Please. That's too medieval. Okay. Well, I'm going to disagree with staff on the recommendation to deny. On the other hand, I think it's time to start shortening these extensions of time. We've talked about this. This is no surprise. Others are also experiencing, you're not the only person who's been on extensions of time for quite a while, and we're trying to stimulate movement. And probably the only way we can do that is to tighten the leash just a little bit, recognizing we really do want you downtown. And I think you're, what you're proposing is unique for our area, not unique for New York. And the idea of the modular construction, the automatic parking, things like that are cool. And I want that to happen in the best way. So I hope that we can help you in some way or another to get your financing, but it's obviously we can't provide it, but, and I don't want anybody to read that somehow we've losing, losing faith in you with a one-year extension, but that is my motion for a one-year extension.
And so, Councilman, this is on Agenda 84. We'll take one at a time?
Whatever the council says we need to do.
Can we take them both, Mr. Scott, together?
Just one at a time there.
Okay.
Then I move now for passage of 84, with the amendment to be a one-year extension of time.
Thank you very much. This is motion, please vote, please post, and both Councilman Barlow and Councilman Ross have been excused. One, two, three, four, five, that carries. Thank you very much. On Agenda Item Number 85, please.
Thank you. Council, same recommendation on the wording of the motion. Council President, President of the bar?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sorry. With all due respect to you.
What was your question?
Your liege, would you say the same wording for this one?
Yes.
I thank you very much. Move for approval. That is against staff recommendation to give a one-year extension of time.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
There's a motion then on agenda item 85. Please vote and please post. Don't thank yet. There it goes. Now you're okay. May thank him. Thank you. Have a safe travel home.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so if all of you are keeping up with us, agenda item 86 has been abayed to the 19th of August meeting. And then we go back to 76, but I was just going, 75 was abayed. Correct? Okay, so we're at 76, 77. 76, VAR 59053, a request for variance to allow no sidewalk curb and gutter where such are required. And number 77, ROC 59056, a request for review of condition of an approved site development plan review. SDR 50483, delete condition number 14, which states, quote, "Construct all incomplete half-street improvements adjacent to this site. Remove all existing substandard street improvements and unused driveway cuts adjacent to the site and replace with new improvements meeting current city standards within two years from the date of this approval," end quote, and to delete condition number 17, which states, quote, "This site shall connect to Public Sewer and Red Coach Avenue and abandon the individual sewage disposal system, ISDS, according to SNHD regulations prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the site," end quote. This applicant is Southwest Specialties, Inc., and the owner is Prestige Worldwide, LLC, on 1.62 acres of 4505 Bossum Street M Industrial Zone. Staff and Planning Commission recommend denial on 76. Planning Commission recommends approval, and staff recommends denial on 77. These are in Ward 4 with Councilman Anthony, are public hearing items which I declare open as the applicant or representative present.
Yes, good evening. David Turner with Baughman and Turner. Mayor, councilmen, councilwomen, I appreciate being here today, and I think staff has got some revised conditions, and I talked to Mr. Parago this morning, and we're okay with those revised conditions, and we would ask for your approval here.
Okay, and Mr. Parago, hi, would you please make comment of those?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Yes, staff is recommending denial. However, if approved, we would recommend a revised condition on item number 77. Rather than deleting condition number 17, we would recommend that it be amended to read, "This site shall connect to Public Sewer within two years from the date of final approval. This site shall be subject to an administrative required review within 18 months of the date of approval to reevaluate the availability of Public Sewer," as submitted to this clerk.
And you're in agreement with those conditions?
Yes, we are.
And this is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to come forward on these two items either? Hearing none, or close public hearing. Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. What about item 76? Were we going to do an extension?
That, yes, that is covered in the amended agreement on item 77. Item 76 already has, I think what you're referring to is the requirement, the covenant that would run, requiring that to be, that's already in there.
Okay, very good. Then I will make a motion to approve item number 76 with all conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on agenda item number 76. Please cast your votes and please post. Motion carries, and on 77, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve item 77 with the new conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on agenda item 77 with conditions. Please vote, please post. Both carry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, and now we are on to agenda items 78 and 79. 78, VAR 59057, where a request for variance to allow no sidewalk curb and gutter where such are required. Number 79, ROC 59058, a request for review of condition of an approved site development plan, SDR 4826, to delete condition number 13, which states, quote, "Construct all incomplete half-street improvements adjacent to this site and remove all existing substandard street improvements and unused driveway cuts adjacent to this site and replace with new improvements meeting current city standards within two years from the date of this approval," end quote, and delete condition number 16, which states, quote, "This site should be connected to the Public Sewer and Red Coach Avenue and abandon the individual sewage disposal system, ISDS, according to the SNHD regulation prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for this site," end quote. The applicant is Concrete Solutions. The owner is Jaime Lopez and Refugio Espinoza, and we have a card from, wrong, sorry, on 1.61 acres of 4515 Bossum Street M Industrial Zone. Staff and Planning Commission recommend denial on item 78, and the Planning Commission recommends approval, and the staff recommends denial on 79. These are in Ward 4 with Councilman Anthony, public hearings which I declare open, and I see you still.
Good afternoon again, Mayor. Councilmen, councilwomen, Dave Turner with Baughman and Turner representing the applicant. These two sites are directly adjacent to each other, and it's basically the same conditions on this site as well, and we agree to those conditions.
Thank you very much. And just to repeat this, Mr. Parago, please.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Similar to the previous items, item 78, staff is recommending denial, but that one does have the condition in there already that has a covenant running of the land to build the improvements at a future time. And with item 79, we are recommending denial. However, if approved, we would recommend a condition, to amend condition number 16 rather than deleting it, to amend it to read, "This site shall connect to Public Sewer within two years from the date of final approval. This site shall be subject to an administrative required review within 18 months of the date of approval to reevaluate the availability of sewer," as submitted to the clerk.
Thank you very much. And anyone wishing from the public to be heard on these two items? Hearing none, I'll close public hearing, and Councilman Anthony.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve item number 78 with all conditions.
Thank you. This is a motion to approve on agenda item 78 with all conditions. Please vote, please post. Motion carries, and on agenda item number 79, please.
Thank you. Move for approval on item number 79 with all conditions.
Thank you. A motion to approve on agenda item 79, subject to all conditions. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I'd like to thank Councilman Anthony and his staff for all their help on this item, and also with the public work staff and planning staff. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, agenda number 80, ROC 59914, public hearing. Applicant Astoria Residential Owner, THM Enterprises LLC, and L. For possible action or requests of a review of condition of an approved site development plan review, SDR 47610, to modify conditions B and C to match a new maintenance agreement with the city of Las Vegas on 55 gross acres at the southeast corner of Lone Mountain Road and Pooley Road. This is PD Plan Development Zone. This is in Ward 4 with Councilman Anthony. Staff recommends approval, and it is a public hearing, and is the representative or owner with us today.
Good afternoon. Rob Hanson, representing the applicant. We're here directly working to actively get this project moving forward. As the staff analysis reads, this is a condition working with the city attorney to maintain the, to get the maintenance agreement put together for this future trail easement and drainage easement. We are in full agreeance with all the conditions. Thank you.
Beautiful. Boy, that's pretty piece of property out there. Yep, this is a public hearing, so anybody wishing to be heard on agenda item 80, please come forward and state your name. Hearing unseen, none. Mr. Parago, anything other than your approval?
That's it, Your Honor. Our staff does recommend approval.
Back to you.
Move for approval.
Great. There's a motion on agenda item 80 to approve. Please vote and please post. Yours didn't go through again for some reason. Did it go? Go. Okay, good. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
And agenda item 81, okay, EOT 59916, did I do too many nines? 59916, public hearing. Applicant Crazy Horse Two Gentlemen's Club LLC, owner, industrial road 2440-2497 LLC. For possible action or request for an extension of time for non-conforming used tavern at 2476 Industrial Road, M Industrial Zone, Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing item which I declare open as the applicant or representative present. Welcome back.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. Jim DiFiore with DiFiore Consulting.
Jackie Barnes.
Thank you. Okay, anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Hearing none, and I'm going to close the public hearing and ask Mr. Parago for anything from your office here.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, this request does comply with code requirements, and therefore, staff is recommending approval. However, we would like to amend condition number one, as submitted to the clerk, to reflect an expiration date of August 22nd, 2016.
Are you in agreement with that?
Yes, I am, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. So essentially, that's a one-year extension of time, as opposed to, I think the request had been for two years? No, the original request was for one year, but I believe there may have been an error in the dating on the... So we're specifically saying August next year? August 22nd of 2016. And you accept that, and that's a good thing. We're trying to shorten these extensions of time. We do hope you'll get together and get this licensing done so we can move ahead, get your club back alive again. We're working on it. All right. Thank you very much, Your Honor. I move now for approval, subject to the amendment as stated by our planning staff and agreed to by the client, by our applicant, I'm sorry.
Okay, and with that amendment, correct?
Yes, ma'am. August 22nd, 2016.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve with the amendment. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Okay, agenda items 82 and 83. EOT 59758, a request for an extension of time of an approved variance, VAR 49041, to not install required off-site improvements along Gregson Avenue. And 83 is EOT 59759, a request for an extension of time of an approved site development plan review, SDR 48917, proposed 4,985 square foot building to be used for auto repair and storage, and a waiver to allow a zero-foot wide landscape buffer along the entire eastern perimeter. The applicant is ACAB Taxi, and the owner is 44s LLC on 1.94 acres at 1,500 Cyril's Avenue CM Commercial Industrial Zone. Staff recommends denial on both items. These are in Ward 5 with Councilman Barlow. Is the applicant or representative present?
I am, Your Honor. I'm Bill Curran with the Ballard Spaire Firm, 100 North City Parkway. With me today is my client, Jane Adie, who is here in the front row. You have previously approved this. My client had an opportunity, or a potential opportunity, to relocate the business over on the Bruce Street. He went into escrow with the owners of a church that was being vacated over there. We had an application pending, but before it was processed, the legislature approved the Uber legislation, which sort of put my client's business into a precarious situation because he's, it's unknown exactly what the impact of that is going to be. So we had to withdraw from that escrow. He's coming back to this location. He's prepared to go forward with the improvements. The improvements are pretty specific to his use as a taxi yard, and with Uber coming in, there would be no other taxi company to be looking to expand right now, so he didn't want to go ahead and make the improvements at a time when his business was in jeopardy. But anyhow, the legislation has passed. We're going forward. We'll see what the impact is, but he is ready to go forward. He wants to get the project completed. It's in his interest. We accept the staff conditions and request your approval.
Okay, thank you very much. And Mr. Parago?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Longstein will be providing the report. Madam Mayor, the subject site has been the center of numerous code enforcement actions over the past six years, which has resulted in council actions in 2009, 2010, and 2013 in an attempt to bring the site into conformance. City council's action in 2010 and 2013 required the applicant to secure permits for all of the existing unimproved improvements, as well as allowed relief from improvements on Gregson Avenue. Since 2010, the applicant filed for building permits for various buildings and onsite improvements, but none of the permits were ever issued and have all expired. The non-permitted structures have been utilized for years without certainty if they are structurally sound, thereby endangering the lives of individuals that utilize or visit the structures. Therefore, staff cannot support the applicant's request for a two-year extension of the entitlement. Thank you.
For two years? How about one year? Never mind. I'm not sure. Is this a public hearing item? Doesn't say. Am I...
Ricky hasn't...
Okay. Okay. Well, anyway, I'm going to open and close the public hearing, because I don't see anybody, anybody have any comments here. I'll close it if there is one, and so you are acting on behalf of Councilman Barlow. Please, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Councilman Barlow. Ask me if I would please ask the council to entertain a one-year extension of time for this applicant. So I move for that, to give the applicant a year extension of time.
I'm so sorry. You moved, how did you move?
Move for the approval of an extension of time for one year.
Great. Okay, so is that...
That's fine with us.
Okay. So there's a motion to extend for a year. Please vote and please post. Now what a great cab owner you are, what a great company you operate, and your staff that works for you just thinks you're the greatest. So it's nice to hear that. So that motion was posted, and I saw it out of the corner of my eye. It carries for one-year extension. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Curran.
Thank you.
Now I go to which one?
Eighty.
Oh, and 83. So sorry, that was 82. And on 83, Councilman Coffin? Move for approval? Sorry, I took that was 82.
Oh, thank you very much, Your Honor. And the same motion will be to ask the council to extend time on this for one more year.
Thank you. A motion to approve one more year, also on agenda item 83. Good catch. And please vote and please post. That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Again, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, agenda item 86 has been abayed to the 19th of August? Okay, and we've taken care of 87. And so now we go to 88. Set the date on any appeals filed or required public hearings, instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates, and appeals from the city planning commission meetings, and dangerous building or nuisance litter abatements.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Citizen participation is next, as number 89. Citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. John Johnson for the record. My councilman is Councilman Barlow, but I guess he had something to do, but I'm still going to make my comments since I waited this long. Like I said earlier during the redevelopment, you know, the biggest problem that we have in the historic West Side is the crime. You know, I stay across the street from the historic West Side, excuse me, the historic Harrison House. My house was broken into twice, this is recently as last week. Couple of months ago, my upstairs neighbor, someone was actually stabbed and murdered in their apartment complex. I have to walk out the Harrison House. I also work at the Harrison House. I have to walk out of my house, out the Harrison House every day, looking at, you know, drug users walking across the street, walking down the street, prostitution on the corner, drug dealers live in my apartment complex. I notify my owner. She's aware of the problem. She doesn't want to evict. Like I asked her, I said, you know, I don't know too many owners who would allow a tenant to have someone murdered in their home and still have that, you know, place to live. That doesn't make sense to me. So, you know, my question is, is there anything that the city has, any type of ordinance, to hold these owners accountable for knowingly allowing this type of activity in their, on their property? their property? You know, if I had a friend who committed a crime and I knew about it, then I could be charged with conspiracy. You know, if these owners are knowingly allowing drug dealers and drug users to rent their property, there should be some type of consequence for it. You know, it's not fair that they just want to make an income off of us and not regulate their properties correctly.
I'm assuming you've made complaints to the Bolden Area Command Metro?
Yes, like I said before, during redevelopment, Captain Scott has been very, very helpful with that. You know, they've actually broken up a couple of drug houses in our community, but, you know, he can only do so much, you know? So I'm wondering what the city, from where I'm from, they had ordinances where if the property owners weren't doing what they're supposed to, you have code enforcement, you can send out and do code enforcement. There's other ways that the city can get involved, you know, on a city level, so that's what I wanted to ask.
I'm going to ask Mr. Sanchez to respond to you, but the most important thing first is law enforcement. Bolden Area Command, keep close touch, because if there are crimes going on there, it's their responsibility, and then it goes through the court processes after people are arrested and charges are made. But in reference to your question specifically, what else can be done through our code enforcement? Mr. Sanchez could perhaps respond to that.
I'm Mayor Rolando Sanchez, deputy city manager. We do have in the books, I believe it's still there, the chronic nuisance ordinance, where they have more than, I believe, three consecutive crimes. Within, I believe, a few months, we're able to go out there with a cooperation with Metro and actually take some action against the property owner. So if I can meet with the gentleman afterwards, get the address to this property, and I will follow up with them with our code enforcement, and we'll try coordinating a meeting with Metro on that.
And as you go forward with that, could you just make a report to Councilman Barlow's office that this commentary was made again, and that he waited and what we are going through process, try to fix this?
Will do.
Thank you. Thank you.
I had two more quick things.
Yep.
The second one, you know, in that community, you know, it's called the historic West Side, but there's nothing historical preserved in there. You know, the historic Harrison House, you know, it looks, you know, bad. The first black sheriff, his house, looks bad. The Allison Walker African-American Museum looks like a shack, you know? When is the city going to reinvest, you know, into our community and preserve our history? You know, Barlow has, you know, done the West Side School, you know, we actually thank him for that, and, you know, that was a very big step. But, you know, we need more so we could take pride in our community and move forward.
I'm going to ask our deputy city manager, Mr. Sanchez, to give him the number also of the people on the Centennial Committee that are specifically addressing the historic West Side, that some of these very buildings to which he's referred could, perhaps something could be organized to try to include them in this, because our Centennial Commission deals with preserving historic buildings and the nature of history of our inner community. So with that information, that would be another phone call. Okay?
And my last thing is for you, Mayor Goodman. I've seen you at numerous events. You were at the, what was that, the Moulin Rouge? We sat down together. You're a very, you know, sweet person when you talk to, you know, one-on-one, but the problem I have, you gave me your little chip before and said, have I had any problems or anything, to give you a call instead of a meeting, but when I call your office, it's very, very hard to get a meeting with you. You know, they ask me all these questions. Sometimes it has to do with, you know, my fifth ward, you know, going on, and they always try to refer me back to Barlow, but I have a relationship with the councilman. I would like to build a relationship with you. I would like to know your ideas. I would like to, you know, tell you what we're trying to do and see, you know, what type of resources you may have, because the councilman may not have the same resources that you have. So I just want to let you know that I have been reaching out...
You have tried.
Trying to, you know, set up a meeting, but it's like your staff is very protective.
I'm going to ask then Mr. Sanchez also just to get me that contact information too. So I, and they're a great staff I have in my office. My schedule is huge and very much impacted with a lot of talking engagements and committees and other things I sit on. So all they're doing is not trying to put you off. They just know that every councilperson really wants to take care of the people in their particular communities, not have it go beyond and go to a larger piece. They want to know the people, know what the problems are, so they can have the first shot at it. So I'd be happy to give you a call and let you know, but I always do refer back to a councilperson, whether it's Ward 1, or Ward 4, and Ward 6, all the wards, I always go back to them first with anything to do in their individual wards. And my staff know that, so that's probably not to be rude to you or anything else. And I meet with regularity with Councilman Barlow, and so he knows what ideas I have that he could also tell you. So just knowing, any way I will follow up too. So thank you for coming and for waiting and giving us your thoughts. We appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I might add something, sir? If I just might add this, the problem with the crime is really taking over throughout the entire city, even into gated communities. And the suggestions they've made to some of these groups are to have the Neighborhood Watch if you can get it started, and Metro would do that, where you're all working together. Because Metro won't be able to handle it themselves, the city can't. It's got to be everyone working together. So they have Neighborhood Watch, and they also have Next Door, I believe it's called, which keeps everybody communicated as to what's happening. If a dog gets stolen even, or if someone strange is hanging around, it lets them know that. And the last thing is to always, when anything happens, to call Metro so they can keep track of the number of times there was an incident. Don't give up. Just stay on that line so that they at least put it in their data bank. That's what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming down. Please see Mr. Sanchez. And then Rolando Laras, there you are. Had your card. Glad you stayed. Thank you for coming down.
Just for the record, my name is Rolando Laras. I'm the publisher of the Las Vegas Tribune newspaper, and as you know, we all know, we all well-known for criticizing a lot of stuff, but today I come over for a different reason. I think, I tried to make a call first to several of the city councils, but I guess the campaign managers don't allow them to talk to me anymore, and that's the reason then they don't return my phone calls. But my point here today is that I want to congratulate the city council for the work on Charleston Avenue, and the merchants over there are very happy with the company that was in charge of doing the remodeling over there. And I believe then, then I, the company maybe deserved a little recognition of, from the city. I got a list of all the merchants over here, then they agree, then the company should be recognized for their service. I know they got paid for what they did, but they did it on, actually, early than what they're supposed to be. They worked with the people from the Save-A-Lot, they opening sometime next week, I think, and they tried to do the job, so when they open, they're going to have the street open already. And I think the company name is CGMB.
CGMB Company?
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for the good work you've done.
I think if you want a copy of this, I can leave it here.
Here with our city clerk, that would be fine.
And maybe someday I can have some of the city councils returning my phone calls, because I think I'm a respectable newspaper, the same way like any other newspaper is. And that's the reason why I call here, to do my duty as a journalist.
Thank you.
Mr. Stavros. Mr. Beer?
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your comments and waiting. Okay, anyone else? All right, so we'll move on to agenda number 90, which I think is probably council member recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Are there any members of the council who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Do you want to start, Councilwoman?
I'll start for Mr. Councilman Barlow first.
Okay, sure.
On August 6th, the coffee with Councilman Barlow will be canceled. It's canceled for the entire month of August, and he asked, please join him for the next coffee with the councilman on Thursday, September 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. until 10:00 a.m. at the Starbucks located at 751 Rancho at Bonanza. In addition, on August 22nd, there will be a Ward 5 Back-to-School Fair, and that will take place on Saturday, August 22nd, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. Children grades kindergarten through five are welcome to receive a backpack and supplies, and there will be vendors from various organizations providing available resources and information, food trucks and ice cream. For more information, please visit his website at www.lasvegasnevada.gov/ward5, or you can directly call his office at 702-229-5443. And he wanted to tell you also that you can stay informed with the events and matters happening in Ward 5 by following Ricky Barlow on Twitter and Facebook. And if you would like to receive the Ward 5 newsletter, please visit the Ward 5 website at www.lasvegasnevada.gov/ward5, and send your email address, or you may call him again directly, at 702-229-5443.
And if you want me to go into mine? Yes, please. Yes, please.
All right, and then in Ward 1, I don't know, it's supposed to be fabulous Ward 5, so we're wonderful Ward 1.
Okay.
It's okay?
Good.
Friday, this Friday, August 7th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., there's a really fun activity going on at the Mirabeille Community Center at 6200 Hargrove Avenue, and the number for that is 229-6359. And what happens is, they have a carnival-type activity there with lots of different booths and tents, and all you have to do is pay one cent, one penny for entry, and then all of the carnival-type booths will be from 1 to 25 cents each. It's a lot of fun. I've attended it before. It's a very family-friendly event, so I hope many people can attend. On Wednesday, August 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., there will be a used book sale at West Charleston Library Art Gallery at 6301 West Charleston Boulevard. There's free admission, and it's open to the public. The library has a great selection of books, including novels, cookbooks, art books, kids' books, DVDs, magazines, and more. And for more information on that, call 702-507-3941. I have a hard time if I go to those, because I see so many books I want to read, and then I just stack them up at home, but they really are good books, so I hope many of you can share in that experience. And then Ward 1 will have a back-to-school and a movie in the park at West Charleston Lyons Essex Park, which is at 600 Essex Drive. And that will be held on August 20th, 6:30 p.m. The movie will start at dusk. There's free admission. There'll be school supplies for children age 5 to 12 only, and the children must be present. The classic 1950 Disney movie Cinderella will be shown at dusk, and of course, we'll have popcorn and water available while the supplies last. We've had a couple of movies in Essex Park. We've had nice crowds there, and the people are most appreciative, so I hope others will want to join them. We've had a really good time. Then we have senior activities. There's a quiche breakfast for anybody over the age of 50 on Friday, August 7th, 8:30 a.m. The cost is $5. It's at Leibern Senior Citizen Center, and it's 6230 Garwood Avenue, and that's, number is 702-229-1600. Also like to point out that we cut the ribbon today in the medical district for the Steinberg Diagnostic Clinic. This is its seventh location in the valley, and I had the attendance of attending along with the mayor and Betsy Freeburg, and it was a wonderful activity. And lastly, if the mayor doesn't mind, you know, we have poetry month, and nobody does anything with poetry. So I added a poem the other day in a meeting. I'm going to add one more, because I just think sometimes we forget how beautiful poetry is. This is from Vincent St. Malley. Vincent, my goodness sakes.
Saint Vincent Mal...
Vincent St. Vincent Malley. I just read an entire book on her. Very exciting life, and from this short four-sentence poem, you can understand how exciting. And this is it. "My candle burns at both ends. It will not last the night. But all my foes and all my friends, it gives a lovely light."
Very nice. Beautifully done. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's start with Ward 6. Councilman Ross asked me to mention a couple of items. First of all, there's his movie in the park, which will be August 7th at 6:30 p.m. at the Amphitheater in Centennial Hills. He will be showing the 1950 version of Cinderella.
Oh.
So there's the information on the screen. Come out, it's a lot of fun. Councilman Ross will be there. Next, his missing juvenile from the Nevada Childseekers. He would like everyone to be on the lookout for this young lady. Last name is Stevens, first name is Titania Yasmin. Nickname is, it looks like it's Tati. Age is 16, female, 5'9", 153 pounds, brown hair, brown eyes, African-American. She was last seen in the area of Cheyenne and Soaring Gulls. She was last seen wearing blue jeans and a light gray crop top, so if you happen to see this young lady, please call either Las Vegas Metro Police Department at 828-3111, or Nevada Childseekers at 458-7009, and see if we can get her to a safe location. And then in Ward 4, please join myself and Mayor Goodman for coffee with the mayor. It will be held Tuesday, August 18th, from 8:00 in the morning till 9:30. The location is the Omelet House, which is located at the corner of Lake Mead and Rampart, right next to the Smith's Food King. So come on out and have coffee with the mayor and I, and let's talk about things that are important to you in the city of Las Vegas, and you can have a great breakfast at that location. So there you go again on the screen, the date and time and location. Come out and have breakfast with the mayor and I. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Councilman Beer?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just reading here about Edna St. Vincent Malley. Edna, who went by Vincent. She and her sisters were, quote, "independent and spoke their minds, which did not always sit well with the authority figures in their lives," end quote, and I find myself understanding why Councilwoman Tarkanian selected her. Ward 2 Coffee with the Councilman is at Rachel's Kitchen, Friday, August 14th, 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning. That is at 9691 Trail Wood Drive, behind Fabulous Freddy's. Join us as we give you an opportunity to sit down and grab a cup and chat about anything of interest regarding the city of Las Vegas, or anything else for that matter. 229-2144, if you'd like to get more information. It will be Dive-In Movie Night once again, August 15th. That's a Saturday night. Starts at 7:30, costs $4 a person, passes for the pool, are not accepted for this event because it is a special event. That's because they have to pay Hollywood some money in order to be able to run Monsters versus Aliens on the big screen. You'll be able to sit back on a deck chair, or even in the pool, and watch this PG-rated, kind of funny, certainly kind of fun, movie. Light refreshments will be available. 229-1488 for more information. On this day in music history, actually, it was one of Councilman Anthony's staff members who pointed out that this day in music history was actually out in our audience this morning. Dave Navarro was out there, Elvis was out there, John Belushi was out there, or at least people who looked just like them. I guess they were part of the busker community here to give us what-for on our new ordinance. And not to forget, that Tuesday coming will be the opportunity for public comment on that ordinance, and we look forward to... ordinance, and we look forward to a rather interesting hearing on that date. It was on this date in nineteen eighty that the Osmonds broke up.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. During the group's popular success, which was most of the nineteen-seventies frequently, Marie sang with her brothers. In the late seventies, they had a TV variety series, Donny and Marie. After some reinvention, Marie appeared on Dancing with the Stars in two thousand and seven, and once again, they are hot properties. They performed on the Las Vegas Strip as headliners in the late two thousands. Donny and Marie is a ninety-minute show. It's earned three Best of Las Vegas Awards, including Best Show, Best All-Star Performer, Best Singer. In fact, Donny earned Best Singer for a second time in the Best of Las Vegas Awards over at the Review Journal in two thousand and thirteen. Although Donny has recently undergone vocal cord surgery and is taking a break from performing, he and Marie are scheduled to be back on the Strip in the fall through at least the end of two thousand and fifteen. And that is all we have, Mayor.
Tell me. Yeah. Well, I remember Julie Andrews, who had her vocal cords operated on. That was the end of her career. So we certainly wish him well.
Once upon a time, Councilman Coffin suggested that I get my vocal cords.
I just thought he was going to have you sew up your lips. We do have a good time here, but thank you. And the interesting facts that always come out, life is very short. Carpe diem every time, all the time. Anyway, our next council meeting will be Wednesday, August nineteenth, at nine o'clock, right here in these beautiful chambers. And as always, we thank our staff, and we thank our technical crew, and we thank everybody that makes these, all of these council meetings. Just stay on and move forward, and we thank you all. And hopefully, we'll see you on Tuesday, August eighteenth, at the Omelet House at Lake Mead and Rampart. And so this meeting is adjourned. And again, thank you all. Have a good week, and congratulations, our president of the Nevada State Bar.